Welcome to the work session of our District Six Board of Education. If you're joining us online, we're glad that you are. We're going to start this work session the way that we always do, just hearing comments and reports from board members, and we just did this a few days ago, so I don't know if we have much to report, but we'll start on this side of the room. Ms. Mueller?
Yes, thank you. I don't have a whole lot to add from what we spoke on Monday about other than continuing to have conversations with both teachers and parents and students in the district, and just hearing feedback on their response to the town hall and their response to the plans to go back to school face-to-face, brick and mortar, as well as virtual in, whoa, is it a few weeks now? Two weeks? Yeah, two weeks now. So that's really nothing new since Monday, really.
Thanks, Pepper. Mr. Hayfley?
It is literally great to see everybody face-to-face. I want to thank all of you for covering for me, and I apologize for not being here. You've all continued to do great work, and I appreciate that. Now, I've received a lot of calls and emails and texts in the last few days, and I look forward to the conversation to share what people have shared with me and hear what your thoughts are as well.
So I would say, along with what John and Pepper were saying, a lot of people have reached out. I just want to say thank you to those people who have reached out and have been very gracious in the way that they have contacted us with information, their opinion, and just their feelings about this whole process. And there's been a gamut on what they believe should happen next and how it should happen next. I've also had some people who have been a little challenging in having conversations, which is unfortunate, and I think it's really, really important that we advise our community that we are all community members. You know, John Hayfley's wife continues to work in the district. Ray Telly has, you know, a child in the district. Natalie is a nurse and has children in the district. Terri Pappas has been part of District Six in many different roles and has a lot of friends that are teachers and principals and knows a lot of students. Michael Matthews has students in the district. I don't have kiddos in the district, but I am part of the community, and I have ongoing conversations and really care about our teachers, really care about our kids, and really care about how this impacts all these different elements in our community that we're all responsible for. And whatever we choose or decide, which I've told people over and over again, nothing is etched in stone. We're always willing and open to hearing and having conversations. You know, we know that this is on our shoulders. We know that we're responsible for this. And, you know, for John and I, we have a whole nother year, and we're going to be here. You know, whatever the follow-up of what we decide, we're going to be here, standing strong, supporting each other, and following through on what we've done. And so I just want to make sure that community knows we do not take this lightly at all. And there's so many elements that we are responsible for in this community. That includes our children, our families, you know, and our teachers, all the people that work in the district, our community members. We have lots of people that we are responsible to. And so we do not take this lightly at all. These conversations are necessary and needed. We're always open to having these, and so I thank you for being part of the discussion. Thank you for, you know, putting your opinions and sending us your thoughts. That helps, and we always want to hear from you. So thank you for being part of this process.
Thank you, Rhonda. Ms. Pappas?
Thank you, Rhonda, John, and Pepper. I actually wrote my comments. I just didn't want to forget anything, so I'll just read my comments. I just, first of all, I want to express my appreciation and gratitude for the individuals who have worked tirelessly this summer to prepare for the school reopening. Kent, Kentson and his staff, the custodians, grounds, facilities, maintenance, transportation, Danielle Bach and the entire nutrition staff, the district-level staff, Dr. Pilch and her staff, building administrators, Greeley Education Association, and for educators, our teachers. Summer... Summer is meant to be a time for regrouping, refreshing, relaxing and reflecting, and this summer has been challenging for everyone, personally and professionally, but perhaps more so for our teachers. We have my sincere gratitude, respect, and appreciation. Our families, trying to make the best possible decision for their children's education, their children's social, emotional wellbeing, and for some parents, the lack of access to resources, the access to childcare, the fear of losing jobs in homes only adds to this difficult decision. Our students, they're just waiting. They're just waiting. They're waiting to see what this year will look like for them, whether they're a kinder student, whether they're a sixth grader, whether they're a senior. They're just waiting. In our community, we have continually asked our community to step up and help fund education. And without the passing of the MLO and the bond, I can't even imagine what we would be facing right now. So thank you to our community. We have received countless offers of support from community members as we try to get this wicked problem solved, and I'm thankful for that. And as everyone else has said, I know that many of us have had conversations, received emails, seen social media posts regarding the concerns of community family members, I mean, community members, families and teachers. And as Rhonda said, I'm grateful. I'm grateful for the people who have the courage to share those ideas and provide suggestions, because if we have learned one thing, it is that no one person has the right answer. And I am so sorry that... And if we have ever doubted that it takes a village, this is the time to come together and work collectively to figure this out. So my apologies for my emotions. Probably haven't talked to anybody for a long time. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Pappas. And Mr. Tally?
Oh, how do I follow that? I want to say thank you to everyone who sent emails, phone calls, everything that you have done. I really, really appreciate it, your dedication and just your support that you have shown, whether you agree or disagree with whatever our decisions may be. Just know that we are working for you and with you, and we welcome any and all comments, emails, calls, whatever it may be, because we really do appreciate it. I do just want to say, all of us up here, we're a team, and we work very well together to make sure that we support each other and that we are working and doing what we can that is best for our kids. But we also are a team with the community, and so we want to make sure that everyone knows our communication is a two-way street, and we welcome it, and we welcome your feedback. We welcome your suggestions, any time that you may have them. I really want to say thank you to the administrators and the teachers. I'm already getting calls from my son's school welcoming us to the school year, and we're still two weeks away, which is hard to believe. I told my son yesterday, I said, you know, it's crazy, spring break is almost over. When does summer start now? Sort of what I feel like. But I really just want to say I appreciate everyone out there, and this is a tough time, but I have the most faith in what we decide, and I look forward to hearing from more of you, and the emails have been great, and the words of encouragement have been great. So please keep them coming.
Thank you, Rick. Ms. Mash?
I also want to say thank you to everyone who has reached out and shared their thoughts and ideas, and I agree with the sentiment that it takes a village, as many great ideas and people with a heart for our community and students and staff working together, the best chance we have for having a wonderful plan, reopening plan. The last couple of days, I guess just what has struck me is I feel so confident in our plan, and there's still just so much fear, and sometimes it's based on inaccurate data or inaccurate information, so I hope that maybe we can present even, I don't know, some more clarity, or please reach out. I, yeah, I feel like I want to offer just my empathy. When, at Sunrise, when we first started working with sick people and testing sick patients, I was in my supervisor's office crying, like, I don't know what to do. What is the plan? I need a very specific step-by-step. I'm scared. I want to do the right thing for my patients. I want to feel confident in my skills and what I'm telling people, and, you know, there was a lot of change every day. But, and even though this virus is still very new on the face of the planet, it's only been here for eight months or something, we have learned a lot, and we have seen that the precautions we put in place have worked. I've actually asked Dr. Wallace if he could share how many people have gotten, how many employees have gotten sick at Sunrise while caring for sick patients, because maybe that could offer some encouragement that the precautions that we're using while working with the sickest of the sick in our community has protected us. And I know there's no amount of information, data, this example, that example, that can completely alleviate the fears, but we... None of us is taking this lightly. None of us is saying that we're willing to sacrifice people. That is not where we're coming from, and we would not move forward if we didn't think that this was safe for our community. So that's where I'm at. I feel like I'm in kind of a unique situation in that I have seen very sick people. I've sent patients to the hospital, but I've also seen where the precautions we're using are keeping us safe. I have not gotten sick, you know, I can't remember the last time I was sick. So anyway, that's kind of my personal place, and I continue to welcome if there's any way that I can... And I'm not an expert, but I am in the field, and I can also tap into resources from other health officials, if there's any way that that information for anyone can help with the confidence in what we're doing. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Well, I'm excited to be back. I'm excited to be back in this boardroom. I'm excited that our, my kids, one started golf practice this week, one started marching band this week, and so for the first time in a long time, there, as you said, Ray, it seems like spring break is over, and it feels like we're beginning to get into some routines, and it's exciting. And just want to do express, we understand the anxiety of so many in our community, so many of our teachers. It's a scary time, but whatever decisions we make, I know they're predicated on the confidence that we have in our administrative team, Dr. Pilch, and our central administration, our principals and our school administration, and our teachers, to create plans that are workable and to, and for our teachers to be able to execute that. You know, I don't know that every school district is... Can have in-person learning during this pandemic, but I'm confident that ours can, because I have incredible confidence in the quality of teachers that we have and the quality of administrators that we have. And so we still have a lot of decisions to make, both as a board and as administration, and schools definitely have, still working through a lot, but I'm excited that it's here. So let's get to work today. And Dr. Pilch, I will turn this part of the meeting over to you, so that you have, I think, some... To get us started.
Thank you. I will go ahead and go to the podium, because I'm going to share some slides and video for you all. So I'll go ahead and just go to the podium and do that. Good morning, everyone, and welcome. Thanks for coming in today. It's great to have you all in person and to be able to do our work in this manner in person. And I know it's a little cumbersome, and we're all adjusting, just as our students and staff are adjusting as well as they're coming back into our buildings. So what I want to start the work session with today is to give you some overview of what's happened in the last four days since we met on Monday evening in our work session to discuss the reopening plans. And then in that, I will also share with you all kind of the next steps, too. There's still some things that are really in process here in the next couple of days. I will have, again, more information Monday night over what I have today to share with you. And then I want to have an opportunity to have some open discussion about where we are and hear your advice, your recommendations, the things you're hoping that we are considering and taking into account as we go forward in the next days and weeks and months. And then the second half of our work session today will, hopefully, we'll be able to go to a place where we think about the school year beyond COVID-19, and what are those greatest hopes we have for priorities for our work this school year and this next, you know, this next 12 months as a school district and as a school board. I don't have anything. Oh, there we are. I will need some help with the password, please. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Crane. So we're here, reopening discussion again. I just want to bring us back again to our mission and our vision, because every decision that our executive team and our crisis management team has been making, we come back to the mission and our vision and why we do what we do in the school district. And I just want to remind everyone that, you know, we are committed to providing every student a personalized, well-rounded, and excellent education, and preparing students to be college and career-ready. And I know that all of you are as deeply committed to that as my team and I are. And then our vision is to empower and inspire today's students in partnership with families and communities to succeed in tomorrow's world. And you all revised these words a little bit here last spring-ish, last winter-ish. We revised these words a little bit, and I just want to put them in front of us again as we're making our decisions and, you know, as we're thinking about this next school year and as we reopen school. And then I want to come back to our values and beliefs, too, and just a reminder that our students come first, and quite frankly, that is why I'm recommending we reopen in person, because our students come first. And we know from the medical experts we've talked with, from the reports we're hearing from the American Association of Pediatrics, that there is a recommendation from them that students be in school, especially our younger children, that the best place for them at this time is with us in a school, not at home on their own and learning on their own. We know that every child can achieve, and we believe that, and we know that our staff, they are the secret sauce to that. They are how we get every child to achieve. The kids come in, they build a relationship with their students, and they cause their students to believe that they can achieve because of that relationship and because of that inspiration that our teachers provide for them. And that's why I think it's so important to start school. I think we got to bring our students in and give our teachers that opportunity to do the thing they do the very best, which is build relationships and build trust and build hope in our children, and give them some time to do that. Because, you know, we've been working over Zoom for several months now, and we had a relationship, and it is still very hard to build on that relationship in that format. And one of my colleagues, the superintendent Windsor, said to me the other night, he said, "Well, Deirdre, I was an elementary school principal. I just can't imagine kindergartners and first graders meeting their teachers for the first time and for the next several weeks on the internet." And I said, "Wow. Well, I was a high school principal, Dan, and I can't imagine ninth graders doing that for the first time. I was a middle school principal, and I can't imagine sixth graders doing it in that way." And so I, you know, I know people are watching what's happening up and down the front range, and there are a lot of questions about why have some schools chosen to go fully remote? And why is District Six not doing that? And I'll get, I want to talk some more about that with you all, because that happened after our board meeting Monday night. We came together Monday night and we said, yes, that we're committed to this plan. We know there's still work to be done, but we want to go forward with our plan. And then Tuesday and Wednesday, you began to hear about other large districts choosing to go fully remote. So I do want to talk about that a little bit as I wrap up today and share with you some of the conversation behind that. We believe that diversity is a strength, and we believe that, and we have more diversity in our district than many of our districts that surround us. No question about it. We are socio-economically diverse, we are racially diverse, we are politically diverse, and part of that, with that diversity, comes some significant needs in our community. Our families rely on us to feed their children. Our families rely on us to take care of their children so that they can go to work, maybe working multiple jobs. We ensure safe, secure, and healthy schools, and I know that is the thing that we are being questioned on the most right now. And I know we have staff and families who are scared, who are fearful about returning, and who are maybe even angry that they're being asked to return, and they're having to work through all of that. Our team, as you all know, and you all, we are committed to doing everything we can to ensure the safest start possible as we come back to school. And you know there is extensive planning that has gone into that. I spent about two hours on a Zoom meeting with our Greeley Education Association Executive Board last evening, and I got a lot of feedback from them about just being back in the building for the first day yesterday, and what are some pieces that they're still worried about, and some pieces that we could still put into place, and concerns that they have. And I'll share some of that with you, and I'll certainly share it all with my team, and we will begin to address those worries and those concerns. And I'm appreciative of those teachers for giving us that honest feedback and helping us to get better at what we're going to be doing here in about 10 days with students. We build positive relationships with students, families, and communities. And, you know, I already spoke to the importance of our teachers having the opportunity to build a relationship with students before the time may come that we would have to go remote. I'm not naive, guys, about the fact that we very likely will have to go remote at some point, all of us. Again, we know that, and my best hope, and I think your best hope, is that we will come together, get schools started in person, build those relationships, get students comfortable with the devices and the online content, so then when we do have to go remote, we're all prepared to do that, and we have the greatest opportunity for our students to be successful in that remote environment. We promote access, opportunity, and choice. A significant part of my decision, and I will own it, to recommend that we come back is about access and about opportunity. If our children are at home, we cannot ensure equitable access and opportunity. We cannot. We cannot. And that is a challenge for us every single day in brick-and-mortar school. But we got to have our kids with us in the classroom if we're going to ensure those opportunities and ensure they have access to what they need to truly be successful and to be college and career-ready. We commit to hiring and retaining quality staff, and, you know, and we have amazing staff. There are people who would choose to now demonize teachers for their fears and worries about returning to work, and who would say teachers are lazy and they don't want to come back. And I'm here to tell you that our teachers are not lazy. Our teachers are worried, and they're uncertain. You know, their world has been very, very certain. You can predict what your classroom's going to look like? You get to predict your lesson plan? You get to plan out for weeks if you choose to. You can plan out the whole semester. You have electronic files and paper files as a teacher to go to that you know you can use if something goes wrong in your classroom. This is unpredictable. This pandemic has created an unpredictability in everyone's community in a way that I'm sure it has shaken many of our teachers to the core, because they don't know what to expect. They have not done this. Not a one of us in education took a class on responding to a pandemic 101. Not a one of us. And, you know, they, we have lots of crisis training we go through as administrators. Mrs. Pappas knows as a former principal. I don't believe we ever talked about a pandemic and how you prepare for a pandemic. I bet college professors this year are adding response to a pandemic to their syllabus for their administrators working on degrees and their teachers who are planning to go into the classroom. So our staff are very important, is my point behind this, and I understand why they're feeling a bit shaky on their feet as they go into this new way of being in a school. And I had the opportunity to be with several staffs yesterday. They are back, they are smiling, they are nodding their heads, and they're ready to do their work. And I'm excited and pleased about that. And then finally, we commit to excellence, innovation, and continuous improvement. You know, this is testing our innovation, no question about it. This is testing our innovation, and we're doing the best we can to be as excellent as possible through this. And I am here to tell you that there's no doubt we are on a path of some improvement that we would have never been forced to do, we would have never done without being forced to do it because of this pandemic. We have advanced blended learning in a way that would have probably taken us a decade to advance blended learning. We're one-to-one. Every child will have a Chromebook or a laptop, some sort of device, this school year because of this pandemic. So even in a crisis, we've been able to continue to improve and commit to innovation and excellence. So I want to share with you the video from the backpack pickup this week at Island Grove. And just, I think it's so important you see this, because this is a big piece of why we're reopening, why I'm recommending that we reopen. If we wondered if it was important to open in person, we just needed to see those families, thousands of children getting backpacks. We ran out of backpacks for the secondary students. We caused such a backup in traffic that the Greeley Police Department called our chief of security, and, well, then he remembered he was chewing out the mayor. We, in addition to those 17,000-plus meals that were given away at the backpack event, another 2,000-plus meals were given away in East Greeley out at the service center on the same day. There's a significant food need in our community for our children and their families. The way we provide that food is through in-person learning. If we go fully remote, we will not be funded to provide food for our family. If we go fully remote, we will not be funded to provide food for our families. As long as we're coming in, we can provide food for our families. So huge kudos to Teresa, our Chief of Communications and her team, for their work on that backpack giveaway, and the video. They put that together in a day, so huge kudos to them. So I have some data with you, or some that I want to share with you that was shared with me on Wednesday in a Weld County Superintendent meeting by Weld County Department of Public Health and Environment. So I'm going to share their slides with you and share this information, which, for me and for the other superintendents of Weld County who are all of us, including Windsor, are still planning to bring students back in person, for all of us, these slides were, this data was affirming to our decision and gave us comfort, some more comfort in our decision. So in our county, there have been 280 young people, so children zero to 19 years of age who have been diagnosed with COVID. And that's out of 3,000...
3,635.
535 cases.
635.
3,635 cases. So of the over 3,600 cases, 280 of those positive cases are people zero to 19 years of age. About split, obviously split, 50% female, 50% male. 40% of those cases are in children 12 years and under. 14 were hospitalized that they know of, and there was one death. And we were quite shocked to hear this that day. All of our superintendents, it is the death of a teenager in another school district, and even that superintendent was not aware of that death. So we don't, what we know is that teenager resided in that district. They were following up to verify if that teenager actually attended school in that school district, but sadly, there has been one death. So then they broke out data by district, really by district boundaries. So this data doesn't take into account whether the student actually attended. So you see District 6 at the top, whether the student actually attended District 6 or not, but they lived within the District 6 boundary. So you can see the different school districts there, and you can see the total number of cases from March to May, and then from June to July. And 133 of those cases were here in the Greeley-Evans area. Not surprising that it's the largest number. We are by far the very largest school district and the largest community in Weld County. So to give you some perspective on that, I think the next largest district would be Windsor, well, and St. Brain is a large district, but they only have Frederick Firestone in the Weld County area. But the next largest district there would be Windsor with a total student population of, you know, far less than half of what ours is. But it gives you a sense of how those numbers break out. And then they broke us out by positivity rate in the last two weeks prior to this week. And so they did areas of the school districts and then Weld County overall. So the, you know, the positive piece here is that Weld County, over those two weeks, the positivity rate had actually dropped to 4.8%. And I'll talk in just a moment about why some of the data we were seeing was a little bit different than this data. I can share that with you. And you see that in the Greeley-Evans area, we were at 4.2% lower than the other areas of Weld County. So again, though, we have the highest number of positive tests because we are, of course, the largest population in the county. So I want to talk a little bit about next steps, and then I'll wrap up with some final comments. On Monday evening for our work session, Weld County Department of Public Health and Environment will provide us an update at that work session. They do need to Skype or Zoom in, and so we'll make that happen. They won't be here in person. They are in back-to-back meetings, but they will provide us with some additional data. Dr. Cindy Krenagi is their Senior Data Analyst. I've had a chance to work with Dr. Krenagi on a couple of other work teams that I've been a part of. She is brilliant, and I have a great deal of trust in her ability to work with the data. And then we're still working to adjust class assignments at elementary and middle schools in an effort to lower class sizes to 25 or fewer, if at all possible. We know that we may not be able to do that model perfectly. You know, there may be some cases where we've got three fifth-grade rounds, for example, and they're all break out at 26, and we just don't have the feasibility to add a fourth round, and probably don't have the space to do that as well. But what we've done to be able to do that is we're pulling all of our interventionists, we're pulling our red act specialists, we're pulling our co-teaching coaches. And where we've opened up classrooms because students have left to go to online, and we've pulled teachers out to go to online, we are able to add additional classroom teachers and bring those numbers down in classes. I did talk with Mr. Osmus this morning about middle level. He said that every middle school has gotten their classes down below 24, and some, the average at Prairie Heights, for example, is 22. So I know one of the things we've got to tussle with us as our eight-member team and my executive team and I is, do we go hybrid at 7th and 8th grade? And I want to talk a little bit more about why I'm still wondering where we are with that. I know there's, that some of the emails and calls that we've all received are asking about going hybrid at middle level. In double-checking this morning with Mr. Osmus and his conversation with the middle school principals, they are saying, please, 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 we need our sixth graders every day, please. If we have to go hybrid, only 7th and 8th grade. And they really want all their kids. They really, the principals are not asking for a hybrid schedule at middle school. And then we're expecting some supplemental guidance from the metro health departments and from CDPHG. I'll talk about that here in just a moment. And then we're working to try to develop some solutions for timely testing and results for symptomatic students and staff, so that we would be able to send students who are willing, families who are willing, to get a test and to have those results within a two- to three-day turn time. So we're working to try to develop that solution, and I'm pretty excited about the community partnership that has come forward, offering to see if they can't figure that out with us. So hopefully by Monday, I'll have more information on that for you all. And then I want to hear your recommendations and your advice tonight, and then, I mean, today, and then again on Monday evening as well. So thank you. And now, I do want to give some final comments. I'll go ahead and take the slides off at this time. Thank you. So I referenced throughout the slides that there were some things I would come back to. So I want to first come back to, I'll kind of start at the bottom and work my way up. How does that sound? So I want to come back to the hybrid piece and why we're still having that conversation. As we, as I work with other superintendents, most of the superintendents who are still having students return are doing something hybrid-ish with their middle school students as well as their high school students, with the exception being Mapleton and Westminster, who are bringing everybody back full-time. But, so I want to talk about the districts that are still fully in-person, because I know it's easy to jump on that news media that more and more districts are going remote. At this time, all of the Weld County school districts are still planning to go in-person. Windsor School Board met on Wednesday evening, I believe it was, and they supported the recommendation of the superintendent to continue with our plan to go fully in-person with our students with a hybrid schedule at the secondary level. And then Brighton School District is still fully in-person, Cherry Creek School District is still in-person, Westminster, Mapleton, Inglewood, and Littleton School District. Now, you know, they're having these same kinds of conversations that we're having. You know, I'm on calls with superintendents multiple times throughout the week, and every single time, some superintendent will say, well, I'm meeting with my board tonight, or I meet with my board tomorrow morning. So, you know, every school district is having these kinds of conversations, trying to make the best decisions for their community. And, you know, I think that's the most important thing for us to think about is, it really doesn't matter what they're doing across the interstate. As much as I respect and hold my colleagues in high regard and respect their decisions, they are not the Greeley-Evans School District. We are, and we have an obligation to make the best decision for this community, and they have an obligation to make the best decision for their community. The school districts that made the decision to close here in the last, this week, that came as a result of the guidance we just received from the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment that came in last Thursday. And this CDPHG guidance is very restrictive, very restrictive, that any child or staff member who appears symptomatic would be sent home to quarantine, and anybody who had been in close contact with them would be sent home to quarantine without a positive test, without multiple symptoms. And so as I visited with my colleagues earlier this week who were making decisions about whether to comment or not, one of the things, and it's a legitimate reason behind this is this fear of getting open and then just having to close, or start closing classrooms, or start closing cohorts of kids, and possibly even closing buildings. So open, close, open, close, and the chaos that that could possibly cause because of the restrictions in that guidance. The other piece, and I was able to be a part of the conversation with the Larimer County Health Department and the school, the three school districts in Larimer County, the Pooter School District in Fort Collins, the Thompson School District in Loveland, and the Estes Park School District, when they moved toward that decision to go remote in their districts. And there, and if you read what they shared with their communities, their biggest worry was around testing and the time that it takes to get test results back. There's a significant backlog in testing at the state right now, far longer time to get tests back from the state lab than what would allow school districts to quickly, and health departments, to quickly respond with quarantine and quickly intervene to stop the spread of the virus. So that's a legitimate concern, as well as the concerns of the restrictive nature of the CDPHG guidelines. So this wins, this is past Wednesday, in the meeting with the Denver area superintendents, we had with us again, and they've joined us many times, Dr. John Douglas of the Tri-County Health Department and Dr. Bill Berman from the Denver Metro Health Department. They have agreed to work on a matrix, a metrics, not matrix, a metrics for school districts that will help us to know the measures they would recommend we're looking at to determine when we need to close, when we need to go remote, when we maybe need to go hybrid. And so it's similar to what I shared with you Monday night with those thresholds at 10%, which are very high thresholds. But what they're looking to build is a metrics that would actually kind of score different areas, and then it would give us, if you're here, you're green to go. If you're here, you know, caution, proceed with caution here, you definitely need to close or go fully remote. So we should have that guidance by the end of next week. So I think that's really helpful for us, then school districts are not trying to figure out on their own what they should be looking at. And it will likely look at the things I mentioned to you all, positivity rate, numbers of cases per 100,000, hospitalization rates, ICU bed availability, so, I mean, it's the similar pieces we were looking at. In addition, we would look at our local data around what's happening with absenteeism of our staff and students. We also expect to have, hopefully by the end of next week, supplemental guidance that will give us some flexibility to that CDPHG guidance that is so restrictive. There isn't, they understand, and I think now, I don't know if the CDPHG understood prior to, but they do now, understand that what they put out was causing school districts to feel like they really couldn't even hold school. So Dr. Douglas and Dr. Berman, as well as the Vice President of the American Association of Pediatrics, the National Association, and pediatricians from Children's Hospital and pediatricians from Denver Health are coming together with a few superintendents to develop that supplemental guidance for us. So, you know, I referenced Ms. McCarty, our coordinator for health services, so that we have additional guidance as we need to make decisions about quarantining or possibly closing. And guidance, so basically guidance that says, here's really what you should be looking for in a child, not just a runny nose to send a kid home. And if someone has a cough and we know they have asthma, that it would be important for them to see their healthcare provider and determine if that's actually the asthma or if that could be related to COVID. So to give us some more guidance around really being able to analyze the situation and make better decisions around quarantining and closing cohorts. So I think, I want to glance here, I think those were the big chunks I wanted to come back to with you all. I will, again, just say that in my conversation last night with the Executive Board of the Greeley Education Association, you know, they would like to see class size lowered. Some of them would like to see us wait and not start so quickly. They asked the question about, do we need more time? And I said, well, tell me what we need more time to do, and maybe we do need more time before we open our doors, but I need a better understanding of what it is we need to do. I think part of a desire for time, I think for all of us, is just we get, you know, more time, we might get more comfortable with this, and we get to practice the routines and protocols more with a little bit more time. They do appreciate the rolling start that we've planned and that we're not bringing all students back all on the same day for those first few days of school. They appreciate that they've had input into our decisions and have been a part of our task force work. They do want even more communication. You know, anytime I think you're in a crisis, there's just never enough communication, no matter how much you communicate. So they do want more communication, and, you know, we'll continue to push that out and share as much information as we can as we have the information. They appreciate our transparency and that we've been willing to have these meetings in open public, and we've been willing to livestream these meetings so they can hear the conversation and hear the town hall, hear the, you know, hear the information that is going out among us and to our community. They did share that, at least one member shared, that there was a feeling that I was not taking seriously the concerns that teachers have about returning, that I'm just kind of brushing that off, I think was the word. You're just brushing off the concerns that teachers have. I want to assure you all, I know teachers have concerns, and as much as I love and care for our teachers and what they do, our first value is our students come first, and our kids need to be back in our schools. Our students need to be in our schools with our teachers, where they can do the real magic of building hope and dreams for our children. So with that, I'm happy to sit down and take questions and hear comments. I guess I probably should refer to Lori. Is there anything else Lori you think that I should share at this point, or Ms. Myers or Ms. Crane? Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Vilch. We take questions from board members, Ms. Mash and Ms. Mueller. I can't, I don't have a button for you, so you'll have to get my attention when you want to speak at this distance.
Could you have the people to speak up, please? Just, speaking to the microphones, it's hard to hear.
Okay, yeah. Just a reminder to everybody to speak into the microphone. Just a reminder to everybody to speak into the microphone so that we can hear one another. But who has, who has questions at this point? Ms. Pappas?
So, I do have a couple of questions regarding, well, I don't know if it's the right time to ask this or not, but I do want to talk a little bit more about the mask expectation and just what that looks like in a classroom and school building. That's one of the concerns that I've heard. Additionally, I also want to talk a little bit more about the three feet versus six feet recommendations. And then I also have just a comment about communication. I just want to encourage everyone to realize that communication is a two-way street. And having worked as a teacher and in a building administrator, I know that sometimes as teachers, we make assumptions. I have teachers that assume that I'm doing something when I'm not aware of that. And so, I just would like to encourage people to be very cognizant that communication is a two-way street. And we need to make sure that we over-communicate rather than under-communicate. So, I just wanted to talk about that a little bit as well.
Thanks, Ms. Pappas. So, I'm glad you mentioned masks. Masks were also part of the conversation last night with the Greeley Education Association, at least from one or two members there, or representatives there. So, the expectation around masks is that we are wearing masks anytime we are talking. So, that's an easy place to start. But then also, that unless it is a mask break time, or a time that is designated where masks are not required, everyone will be expected to wear masks all the time. So, let me talk about when masks are not required and what we mean by mask breaks. So, obviously, when students are eating, masks are not going to be required. So, one of the concerns is, well, students are eating in the classroom, and they're sitting at their desks, and masks aren't required. You know, what about that? And so, what, you know, that's why it's important that we've ordered a sneeze guard for every single classroom, and that every teacher has a face shield if he or she feels like they need to wear it. And my recommendation is that whomever that staff member is who is supervising those students in the classroom while they're eating is that they take their physical distance and significant distance beyond the six feet to be away from their students during that time. We, the other times that masks will be allowed to not be worn will be, and we just got guidance today on this, it will be when students are socially distanced, outdoors, in physical activities. So, the guidance that we will be sharing with principals later today is that if you're outdoors and you are exerting yourself and you are staying away from each other, you may have your masks off. That is very, that is exactly what we did with the summer athletics returning. We did not have a single student that, who we know of, that was positive to COVID in that setting. The other time, we are also requiring that there are mask breaks. And we're asking principals to work with our staffs to develop when and where those occur throughout the school day. They may occur in the classroom if the teacher is comfortable saying to students, "While you're sitting at your desk, working on this, everybody, you can take your masks off for the next 10 minutes." And the teacher should remain at a distance from the students during that time. Shouldn't be going up to the desk to help students while they have their masks off. But that may occur. We've also encouraged principals to work with their teachers on plans on when they may go outdoors with their students, and may have their students socially distanced, and allow the students to take their masks off, perhaps while they're working on their devices and/or reading a book, but taking some of those breaks to have their masks off for a few minutes while they're outdoors. I do know that we have some staff who, in their accommodation request, said, "I don't ever want to, I can't ever be around someone without a mask on." So, in those cases, we're working to make that accommodation so that that staff member is not present, if their physician has actually said that's required, that staff member is not present when students have their masks off. So, that would be a staff member who couldn't supervise lunch, for example. I think there's worry that we will have all kinds of mask exemptions. I heard that last night as well, that like, you know, we'll just, if parents or say, "Here's why my student can't wear a mask," or "Here's why I can't as a parent wear a mask," that we'll allow that. And that just isn't how we're going to operate. We're going to require masks. And every exemption will go through Ms. McCarty's staff, and it will require a legitimate physician's note to have a mask exemption. In some of those cases, a face shield will be provided instead. And we know the face shield is not as effective as the mask, but it's something beyond nothing. And the health department officials that we've been working with all summer in the Denver metro area have said, you know, "Across the board, do not use a face shield as a substitute for a mask. But if you have a child who really cannot wear a mask, a face shield is an adequate substitute in that case." But those are, really should be very few cases, and on a case-by-case basis. This three feet versus six feet.
Can I just, can I ask for clarification?
Yes.
Also, excuse me. So, another consideration you probably take, you've thought about, I'm sure, but coming from an MTSS perspective, is there, has there been conversation about the student who is in the classroom and just, like, all of a sudden is having, like, a little mental breakdown because they have this mask on? It's similar to any type of intervention support that we offer. So, I just want to confirm that those conversations have been had and know that that could be a possibility.
Well, they haven't been had yet at the building level, Ms. Pappas, because teachers just came back yesterday. But that is a part of this introductory work that we're doing with teachers as they come back. And as you all know, we push the student start date by two days to give us those additional two days to, you know, to work through issues like that. And really, for the building to talk about, how are we going to handle that? What do we want to do as a building? That, you know, and they will figure that out. I'm confident about that.
Thank you.
So, the three feet, six feet, versus six feet. So, at, coming out of the guidance from Colorado Department of Ed and the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, there really is no distance requirement for elementary children. It is recommended that if we can get a three-feet distance with elementary children, that's a good-to-do thing. And so, their advice was to work toward that three-feet distance if we could at elementary. And then at secondary, they've said, you know, at least three feet of distance, working toward that six-feet of distance if you can. So, that's the distancing piece. I know there's still some anxiety as teachers are trying to figure out their classrooms. You know, how do they get three feet? How do they get to six feet? And so, really, the guidance from the state has been, you're working toward that. It's not a requirement, but it, you know, it's something we want to try to do.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Mr. Tally?
Thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. I appreciate that. All my thoughts, I sort of just jotted down, and I'm just going to talk through them, I guess. Might be the easiest thing for me to do. I'm really glad that you mentioned the metrics for when students are sent home. I was wondering, is that metrics, will there be a, something similar that parents could use at home? Or can they, can parents get a copy of that so they can take temperatures or look for the same symptoms or signs?
So, that, parents are getting, every parent, every household will get a refrigerator magnet of what they're looking for. And then parents are being asked to check symptoms every morning and to log those symptoms, and to keep their children home if they have any symptoms.
Okay, perfect. And some of these, I think the military part of me always thinks, if you have a problem, also have a solution. It's a lot of my stuff, I also have a solution at the end, if you want to hear that. If you don't, that's fine.
I like solutions.
So, the next thing I have is, what are, what's the timeline looking like for when, if a student will be sent home and a parent is being notified, how much time are parents given before they have to come pick their student up?
Well, I don't know that we've talked about that, other than to say you need to come immediately. So, we are creating a room that will be isolation for children who are exhibiting COVID-like symptoms that will be separate from the health room, where kids come to get medication, or they, you know, they fall and bump their knee, and they need that looked at. Our plan is to notify the parent immediately and ask them to come as soon as possible, and to remain with that student until the parent's able to come, and then to walk that child out to the car to the parent.
And so, with that, if we have a multi-school family, are the schools going to collaborate with one another to let each other know, "Hey, we had so-and-so's brother showing symptoms"?
No, we won't know, not unless there is a positive case. And then at that point, we absolutely will coordinate with the other schools. And I'm looking to Lori to make sure I'm getting it right. But we will not quarantine or isolate simply because a child or a staff member is showing symptoms. That person has to go home. But the other folks who have been with them do not need to go home until we know that it's either presumed to be COVID or is COVID.
Okay. So, if there is a positive case, then the siblings will, the schools will all be notified?
Yeah, if there's a positive case, the whole family that lives together will be quarantined. The health department will direct that, and we'll help them to notify families, you know, because we have more personnel than they do, of course. But yes, then they will be notified, the schools would be notified, and everybody, those children, and anybody who's been in direct contact with the positive case or the presumed positive case will be quarantined.
Okay. And then, I would like to see or hear about a specific plan for when we have to go remote or hybrid or whatever it may be, and sort of have that laid out so that way there's the expectation. Like you said, we're sort of all expecting this to happen, expecting to go remote of some sort in the future. And so, I would like to see a plan ahead of time so we're not...
We have that plan, Mr. Tally. We've actually had it for months. But Dr. Daddery and her team have developed those plans. Much of that you can see on our district website. You know, that's probably something we could do here in a board meeting coming up in the next few weeks, is just have Dr. Daddery and her team actually just present on what does it look like when we go fully remote? And let you all see a little bit about that. We could, you know, we could certainly do that.
And then along with that, is there a meal plan in place with that included in that?
A meal plan?
Yeah, so if we are remote?
Well, it really depends on the guidance or the requirements, the time from our federal government. There's really strict requirements around our ability to feed children when we are remote. So, that gets very problematic and very, very, very expensive.
And then my last question?
So, let me back up on that. Part of what is so complex about that is we can only feed paying students or students who are identified as free and reduced lunch. So, if we were to offer food at a site for family to come get, it's not like we could do, during the summertime, we could feed everybody. But when you are in the school year, and we can't feed everyone and be federally reimbursed for that. So, the student has to identify as free and reduced lunch. So, it gets really complex. But you know us, and you know Danielle Bach, our Nutrition Services Director. She's going to work hard to figure out how to get food to people as best she can.
That's good. And then the last is around masks. Just had another question around that. I know we mentioned on Monday, Friday, what is today? The last time we met, whatever day that was, about students will be asked to go home if they are not compliant with the mask. How is that going to work with students who are on IEPs? Are we considering that as suspension? And is there going to be a manifestation at some point if they are sent home?
You are right on track, sir. You know how this works. You work in this world. Yeah, so, I mean, ideally, we rarely ever have to send a child home for not complying with a school rule, like, "You got to wear shoes." Or, "You can't wear that profane t-shirt," or "You can't wear gang clothing." Rarely do we have to send children home for that. But if we have to, we will. We will provide the mask and direct the student to wear the mask. And we will work with the parent to direct the student to wear the mask. But, you know, it's a last resort to send a child home. But if we have to, we will, because we've got to keep the other children and our staff safe so that we can have school.
Awesome. You know, I had to ask that.
No, I'm glad you did. Thank you. It's a great question.
And then, that's all the questions I have. I just, I have to just say it, and I know that your team is working on it, but I still would really like to see a survey to parents and staff. So, if we do go hybrid or remote, we kind of have some recommendations of allowing them to speak their concerns and their...
So, you're talking about after we implement, Mr. Tally, or you'd like to see one now? What's the request?
Well, I...
What's the interest?
I'm willing to work with everyone. But I personally would like to see one now. But I know that we, when we met, whatever day, Monday, we came to consensus that that might be too soon. And so, I would just like to see a survey sent out, preferably sooner rather than later. But I know that sending it out next week might ruffle some feathers, and it might cause some fear and anxiety. And I don't want to do that. I don't want to cause any more fear and anxiety.
Well, I think it's, the question is, what do we want to know? What is it we're trying to find out? I think that determines when we would send it and, you know, what is it we're looking to learn.
I think what we're all seeing and hearing are a lot of concerns. But I want to know, what are we doing that people appreciate? What are we doing that is working for people? And then allowing others to voice in a survey, "This is what I did not like that you did, and this is what I think we could do better." So, more of a solution-focused survey to help us when we have to go through this whole process again in the future. So, that's where, I mean, we could do it in a month or so, and it would be fine that we, people get the ability to sort of settle into the school year and...
Yeah, we did something like that this past spring, after we got into remote learning, before we began to design the remote learning plan for this year. So, yes, I think that is helpful.
That's all I have, I promise.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Ms. Elise?
So, when you talk about the moments when kids would get a break from their masks and they're indoors, is there any conversation of what is safe as far as a time period? So, let's say if that teacher is someone that really can't be around the kiddos, when would it be safe for her to come back in the classroom, once they put their mask back on? Just talking about aerosols and how long it takes and what the ventilation systems are like. Is there a time that we're kind of shooting for as far as a teacher going back into the classroom?
The guidance we've gotten is that mask breaks should be around 10 minutes and probably no more than that. That the level of possible exposure in that time is far less than if we extend up to 20 or 30 minutes, for example. We also will have, for every classroom, an air purification machine with HEPA filters. And so, we're hoping that, you know, that's going, not hoping, we know that's going to help in terms of the air quality in the classroom.
And then, for lunch, how much time will be allowed for lunch for them to have their masks off?
Well, there's a, there is a 20 or 30-minute lunch period that takes the whole time to get the food to the classroom, get the food served, and the food eaten, and the food picked back up. So, my guess is kids will have their masks off for probably those 15 minutes or so that they're eating lunch. Food is the tricky part on all this, right? Eating is the, eating is tricky.
And then, can you just go over again, and I know I ask this every time, but I feel like it's really important, why it's important for parents to stick to their decision of whether they're going to be in-person or go remote?
To stick to their decision?
Like, so if they decide, "I want to go brick and mortar," and then they're two weeks in and say, "Well, you changed my mind."
Yes, I can, yes, I can answer that. We have deployed our teachers to online learning. So, there, you know, we, we don't, those teachers are not sitting back at the brick and mortar school waiting for children to come back to brick and mortar. So, we need parents to commit, because we've now deployed about 40 of our staff or so to be online learning teachers. We are not naive to the fact that we will have some children this just doesn't work for, and we will need to bring some children back into the brick and mortar classroom. And I would assume there will also be some children who start with us whose families decide, "This doesn't feel quite right. I'd really like to move into online." But we, the academic achievement team, the new online learning staff team have been... But we, the academic achievement team, the new online learning staff team have been making individual contacts with each family to talk with them about the expectations and to be certain they understand the expectations, not only of what online learning looks like, but the expectation that this is a commitment and you're sticking into this commitment for, for the semester.
So I've been back to work since late April, and I'm amazed how many times with adults I still have to correct them on how to wear their mask and to put it over their nose. Is there any kind of resources to really help our kiddos understand correct mask wearing?
Yes, there are. Ms. Myers, do you want to talk about what we're doing around that?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Pilch. Ms. Elise, we are in the process of developing a video that we will put out to all the schools, one that's aimed at younger students and one that's aimed at older students that will address all the protocols around mask wearing, social distancing, all of the things that we have in place in a visual way. So we were able to do that this summer by getting some footage of our summer school programs and watching those kids adhere to the protocol. So there'll be information about hand washing. Our nursing coordinator, Lori McCarty, just reviewed that script, and we'll get that out hopefully before school starts next week.
Thank you. And then can you just tell us some of the response that we have seen in those summer programs with kiddos wearing masks? I mean, was it pretty, you know, easy for them to get used to? Are they kind of used to it anyway? What have you noticed in just our summer programs? I mean, because I guess that's kind of a good, small test run. And so what does that look like in our district?
So I'm gonna, I need to tell you first that we have not gone out and observed our summer programs. I just need to be honest about that because we know introducing additional adults into that setting could be introducing COVID into that setting. So I want to, the information I have is anecdotal on what we've heard from the staff working the summer school programs. What we have heard is that students have been very compliant, even last spring when we brought students in at Jefferson High School and at Gap, that students were so thrilled, those high school kids were so glad to be back in school. They were very compliant, staff were very compliant with the mask wearing. We have heard that children are actually doing better with this than we thought they would do with this. We have seen some issues with some of the programs that use our buildings that are not school district programs and with mask compliance, and quite frankly, I think the issues are, occur when adults are not making themselves be disciplined about wearing a mask and not asking their, the children they're working with to be disciplined about wearing masks. So that's work we're still working on with some of our partners who are in our sites. And to be fair, they've not been in this deep, intense training that the rest of us have been in and our principals have been in throughout the summer in preparation for mask wearing. Teresa, do you have anything else you want to add about summer programs and mask wearing?
No, just similar, similar anecdotal information I received. Scotty, well...
I could, my daughter participated in the freshman transition program at Greeley Central, and she's, she said that everybody wore their masks the whole time and that she had a fantastic time as well. So it didn't seem to cause any disruption for those freshmen.
And then one comment I would make is just kind of us using the word "normal." I think for some people, "normal" to them means exactly how we used to do it. And I think we need to get away from saying "normal" because it's never going to be like it used to be. And so although this is our new normal, and it feels good to us, I think it's, it's really difficult when we use that type of language because people want it to be just like it was. And it's never, it's not going to be like that for a very long time. So I think making sure that we use the, some kind of different verbiage of where, you know, kids feel at least some type of community where they've been isolated, and that's really, really important for our kiddos. And we have had, you know, staff come to our board meetings and talk about relationships, talk about how important those relationships are, talk about how important those partnerships are, and seeing their teachers and forming that relationship. So I think, you know, our staff definitely understands tho, that how important that is. So I just want to make sure that when we're talking about all of this stuff, we do recognize that it's not normal. We do recognize that this is not how it used to be, and it's going to be challenging and different, but it works. And I can tell you as someone who kind of like Natalie going back to work, you know, at first you see these little kinks that happen and you, you know, shift. Okay, this didn't work, so we need to do this different, and you, you shift in that. But it is a little taxing emotionally, and so I think we just need to make sure that we have things in place for our teachers to vent and to, kind of like what Ray was talking about, a survey, somewhere where there's constant communication, where they can give ideas, suggestions of, you know, things that we need to kind of pivot, switch, or change. I think that would be really helpful. And that teachers know that this communication is available and they were totally open to this. I think that would be really important. And I agree with the survey. Again, in our last meeting, I mentioned I'd like to give us a little bit of time being used to this, and I think that would be advantageous in you doing the presentation of talking about what it looks like to go remote. And then once that survey comes out, it could be, how are we doing? And then from the presentation of us going remote, do you have any concerns or questions? That could be kind of part of the survey. And then my next question is, obviously, I've heard from community members that are saddened that it is depending on the district to provide meals for kids in our community, that it's, you know, on the district to supply, you know, making sure that they have mental health, that they're taken care of. And so I think that that's a conversation as communities we need to start having, that it shouldn't be just on the district. I mean, we have access to these kids and families, which are helpful, but if a district shuts down, it shuts down everything, and I, that's problematic. So my follow-up question to that is, what, as board members, community members, what can we do in reaching out to our elected officials of what needs to be in place to make sure that our kids are taken care of? Whether we go remote, what kind of things do we need to push and make sure that's there, like food? And what would be helpful to make sure that our elected officials know? I know one question is the capability of internet, and the other one is food. Those are the top two that come to my mind, but if there's anything else that we need to make sure that our elected officials know, I think that would really be helpful. I think everybody wants to do something, so if that's one thing that they can do, I think that would be great.
In terms of elected officials, I think the only, the piece that I hear in what you're saying that is within their, might be within their realm would be internet access. You know, I, I think there are many, many community agencies in Weld County that work to try to resolve the issues around food, the issues around childcare. I know the boards I serve on, we frequently talk about food needs and opportunities to get food to families. We, we often talk about childcare and the needs for affordable and even free childcare. But I don't know that I see those as responsibilities of our elected government. I guess I'm, maybe they are. But I, I think that we're often looked to, to provide food because we do it during the regular school year, and I think people think that assumes we can provide food even when kids are not with us because we're, we're doing it during the school year. So you'd be doing it if they were here, why can't you do it when they're not here? And I think that's why we are often looked to, to do that. And I also think that there is an expectation that we do that, not, and really nationwide. I don't think it's unique to Weld County. You know, our, our own governor said, if, if we go remote, we've got to be able to find ways, school districts have to find ways to feed children and find ways to provide childcare to children, and, and put the responsibility right back on us as a school system. So, which again is another reason to not go remote until we absolutely have to because that is very problematic. We are not a childcare provider. We are an education system, and the requirements for licensed childcare, we don't, we do not carry that license and we don't provide that. Whereas in some districts, like the district I used to work at when, and the district right next to that district, they, they are licensed childcare providers. They provide before-school and after-school childcare through the school district that parents pay for. It's tuition-based, and so they, they do have those licensed programs already at their school sites that they can ramp up during a time like this and, and charge tuition or have some, and have some scholarships available because those are profit-earning programs, and so there are some profits you can put toward families who cannot pay. But in those systems, their demographic is a flip of ours, whereas our demographic is really about 70% of our students qualify for free and reduced lunch, and 30% do not. That many of those, those districts who are able to provide those childcare programs, their demographic is flipped of that. So they'd be around the 30 or 40% of free and the 60 to 70% not free and able to pay.
And then my final question is, is there any legislation that you see or have heard at the state or federal level to help schools while they're reopening?
Yes, I mean, there are, there is legislation that is being discussed about at the federal level right now around the possibility of sending additional dollars to school districts throughout the country to respond to COVID. You know, so yes, there, there is at the national level. I think the big question for many of us will be what happens after December? So the dollars that were flowed to us from the federal government for COVID response in public education, most of those dollars must be spent by December 30th. And the requirements for us to provide leave for COVID-related absences, that expires as well this fall, mid-fall. So I, you know, a big piece I think that's the national conversation is what, what should be the additional response to respond to this pandemic at the federal level and then trickle down to the state and local school district level.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elise, Dr. Pilch. I think Ms. Mash was next, but I do want to just ask you guys, we've been here for an hour and a half almost now. Is anybody feeling the need for a break from, from this?
Sure.
Yeah. Let's take, why don't we take a five, 10, I guess I should say, let's take 10 minutes and at least get out of our chairs, and you can, yeah, let's have a break. We'll be back in 10 minutes.
I spoke to Dr. Pilch about the change. I saw about the change.
Well, that was a quick 10 minutes and we'll pick up where we left off. We do have some other agenda items that we would like to get to, but realizing that this one is, is a priority. So Ms. Mash, you were, you're up.
Okay. I might, I guess maybe our more comments or suggestions, but I definitely think more communication is, or the more communication we can provide, the better. And at the risk of always adding more work for our wonderful communications team, my suggestion is, is some sort of just a weekly update, even if it's just like District Six by the numbers, kind of like how the Tribune did with COVID. I also know there's a balance between what information is helpful or instills confidence versus what information might make people feel more concerned. But it seems to me that if we can say, hey, we had four cases this week, or we had two cases, or we had zero cases, you know, that just might, just a picture of kind of where the district is, I guess, as we go into school. Even if the update is, hey, we're still waiting for this additional guidance, or here's a slight tweak to what the plan is, I don't know. It just seems like if we kind of are like verbally processing with our community, and maybe that's just.
Ms. Mash, can you speak into the microphone a little bit more? Thanks.
So yeah, just, just even a weekly update, even if there isn't anything to update. It's, we're, we're continuing to listen, we're continuing to provide the information to our community. I love the mask poster over there, I don't know if you all can see it, but, and I'm sure that Ms. McCarty and you're all aware, there's, there's a lot of printable material on the CDC website in many, many languages that we could have posters of how to wear a mask, how to wash your hands, all those kinds of things perhaps. I encourage all of us to continue with the messaging of masking, socially distancing, and washing your hands well. And we keep saying when we have to go remote, when we have to close. And I mean, we, we don't have to if our community will continue to, to follow these precautions. We are definitely going to have those little blips of, oh, our cases are going up, okay, we tightened up, then we got comfortable. And it's, I mean, I assume that's going to be the case until we have a vaccine. But if, if we can continue with the messaging, get our parents to really help, get our students to encourage the other students to follow the precautions, you know, potentially we can stay in school full time. And I guess just a thought that came up when you were talking about the district providing food and, and childcare and things like that, I just feel like the pandemic has really just shined a light and a magnifying glass on problems of society in general and inequities. And they're just all exacerbated during this time. And so, you know, we're doing our best to navigate those issues, but they're, they're not new and they're not something quickly changed. And so I, I guess I'm encouraged that maybe there's a larger awareness of, of general problems in society and hopefully as a community, we can band together to, to solve those. Those are my two thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Ms. Pappas is back up again.
Sorry, back up again. So two things that have come to mind, yesterday I received, I received contact from two retired teachers asking what they could do to help and how volunteering might look different this year. So I don't know where we are with the volunteer program. I know we had the mentor program for new teachers that was implemented a couple of years ago, so I'm, I'm curious about that. And one of the teachers was very concerned about how are we contacting, are parents being contacted to, to find out if they really understand what the expectations are? As we've mentioned, not everyone has internet access. Maybe everyone doesn't really understand what the expectations are. So are our parents getting contacted prior to school opening to say, hey, this is what it's going to look like, this is what you need to do and such? And then also, as she said that, she was also saying that's something that she could do. She's a retired teacher, she's bilingual, she would happy, be happy to be assigned to a school that she recently retired from and helped make that contact. And is, I think both of us are certain that there are a lot of retired teachers out there that would welcome the opportunity to help either mentoring students or offering that support to teachers without actually going into the classroom. So I just wanted to make sure that we bring that up. And I think it's, her concern, her call was spearheaded by her visiting a neighborhood that there were about eight kids outside playing, and she talked to the ninth grader and asked the ninth grader, so are you going, are you going back to school, are you online? And the ninth grader, this was a couple of days ago, I don't really know, I don't know what's happening. So just making sure that we're communicating to everyone and also offering that, that help.
Wow. Thank you. I, I need Wes to update me on where we are at the retired teacher mentor program. We are limiting visitors and numbers of adults into schools, but we have decided to allow student teachers and practicum students. So I would assume he's allowing mentoring to continue as well. Every parent who has opted, who has registered for online is getting a personal contact. We do not have a plan to contact every family about returning. I understand our elementary schools typically do that and are doing that. I don't believe there's a plan at secondary to do that. It's something we could talk about. You know, we, to Natalie's point, I mean, we, we've communicated multiple times to families about the plans and about how to access the plans. We've done that in multiple languages, to the extent we've had some feedback that they would like us to stop communicating with them so much. So let, will, are you asking Ms. Pappas about contacting every child's family prior to the start school? Or the online learning? Which piece were you talking about? All of it?
I think it was, I guess my perspective is when students do return to school, there's always a plan in place for contacting the parent, the kids that haven't shown up.
Yes.
I mean, those plans are in place.
Right.
So the other thing.
And we did run a registration process and now, and then they did a makeup registration this week again, and they are contacting those families that have not gone through the registration process. We've had significant response to our online registration. They've done a really good job of getting parents in online.
Yeah, no, I'm not suggesting adding anything. I'm just saying that was a concern that she had just out in the.
Thank you.
And, and maybe a possibility might be making sure that we are putting that information, like at apartment complexes, you know, there's Island Grove Apartments, all the apartments that are big that you could just put them there so families could just have an additional, oh yes, this is what's happening. But I'm not suggesting any, any plan, just, but the other thing I wanted to clarify is the, the retired volunteer, also a virtual support of students. So you've got those online students and can I have access to be that mentor for them as opposed to?
Yeah, that's excellent. Thank you. So I guess, Ms. Pappas, at some point, can you send me those names?
Yep.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pappas. Mr. Hayfley.
You know, first of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Pilch and Ms. McCarty and all the staff for their incredible efforts on this. And I apologize if I have a lot of questions, some of them may have already discussed, and so I'll try to be, I'll try to be quicker. Dr. Pilch, are you planning on going to every school in the next seven days? I know that's very hard, but to alleviate fears, answer questions, and just to show that, that you and the board understand the challenges that are currently occurring?
I am, I am scheduled into a virtual staff meeting at every school between now and the second week of September, third week of September, we just couldn't get them all in for their schedules and mine as well. But I am scheduled to do virtual staff meetings. And you might wonder, why are we doing virtual staff meetings? I just want to remind you, we're trying to limit the number of adults who gather together. So we, we avoid having to quarantine large groups of students should there be a case of COVID in that group of staff. You know, even with us today, as I look at our nurse, if one of us were to be positive for COVID in the next few days, there would be a question about who, who were you with two days ago and what kind of contact did you have with them? And we would discuss this kind of contact and have a conversation about if there's a need to quarantine or not. So that's the reason I'm not going out in person, but I am meeting with each staff. I met with four or five staffs yesterday. They, they are 45-minute meetings where I do some update on COVID and answer questions. And then they have an opportunity to put questions in the chat. I put them into small groups where they can talk a little bit and come back and ask questions again of me. I do need to get scheduled and get out to some of our support staff. I, I have not been able to get to, you know, transportation and I did get out to nutrition services earlier, well, last month, a couple of weeks ago, I got out to visit with nutrition services. Christina's working to schedule me into those other departments, she's signaling.
Yeah, we've already scheduled with nutrition services and with IT.
And with IT. And so we've got transportation to get scheduled with. So it's, you know, it's important that I get out and get with each of the groups. I want to get out to grounds and talk with them. In some cases, I can go out and we can be outdoors and I can talk to them outdoors, you know, socially distanced and spread them out if they're a smaller department. That's what we did with nutrition services earlier this summer. You know, those folks were working most of the summer, as were our transportation folks, working on buses, driving that, that food around. And so, you know, they've been back and they've been on the front line. You saw them in the video on the front line there, helping to pass out backpacks and food at that event. So they've, they've been doing a heavy lift all summer and I, I need to give a shout out to them. And I, you know, one of the things I didn't mention in my opening that I should have, that I've been telling, I told GA last night, if we don't open in person and we have to go remote for, say we set a schedule out like some of our colleagues have till, go remote until October 15th, we will be furloughing hourly employees who cannot work remote. And that is the last thing I want to have to do as I think about our employee groups. We've talked a lot today about teachers and, because teachers have just come back. And so I think they're fresh in our mind and they're the ones we're hearing from. But these other employee groups, guys have been working all summer. Our custodians, our ground crews, our facility services folks, our IT folks, our, our building admin and administrative assistants and clerical staff have been in, in the buildings all summer long, meeting the needs of families and attending virtual meetings with us. So teachers are of present mind right now, but you know, they're, they're a large portion of our, of our employee group, but a third of our group are not teachers. And, and many hundreds of them do not have the ability to work remote, hundreds of them. And so opening is a part of keeping them from having to be furloughed also. So I, thank you for whatever you said, Mr. Hayfley, that allowed me to go down that path. Thank you.
And I, I just want to reiterate what Ms. Mash said about, you know, I think it's really important that, that all of our staffs know that you're going to be meeting with them and that's anticipated and give them an opportunity to think about in the future. You know, we, we've had coaches working with student athletes, and we've had summer school, and we've had successes not having COVID transmitted. And, and would it be advisable to have some of those people give testimonials as to things, how they felt going in and some of the things that they've done to, to show that this is really, really feasible and it's, it's a positive thing because they've done a great job and they need to be lauded for that. And maybe they can share with their buildings, you know, this is, this is what I did, this is how it worked, and, and we don't have anything positivity based on that. Just a thought. Then, you know, we taught, we've done really a great job with the social emotional component for our students during this challenge. That seems to be something that I know Ms. Mueller and several other people have encountered with teachers. Have we told our teachers that there is mental health provided for them if they are anxious and they, they are trying to, to deal with this in a positive manner?
Yeah, we have. We've sent it out. Earlier in the summer, it was sent out to staff. It's also included in our reopening plan for staff. And then in the, the teacher town hall I did, it was in there as well, what those resources are for teachers. And so, you know, we'll continue to push all that out and continue to elevate the importance of that as, you know, as we get in, into the fall. But yes, we have. Thank you for that.
I don't, I didn't sleep at a Holiday Inn Express last night, and I don't pretend to be a doctor, but I was reading on the CDC website concerning load limits. And are we spending time explaining, you know, you've talked about the three feet and the six feet and the idea that if I carry on a conversation with Ms. Solis and I'm positive and it takes 15 minutes within three feet for her to get the virus? Are we, are we spending time talking a lot with our staff about how that's working? And then my other question, and maybe it's for Ms. McCarty, is does, how do the load limits work when it's in a room, even if there's a purification component and they're having lunch? Is, is a load limit something that needs to be made, people need to be made aware of?
So let me first talk about training. Staff are, are receiving extensive training. The staff last night that I spoke with were very complimentary of the video that Ms. McCarty put together for training staff. But then they're also receiving training at the building level, so yes. But people have to hear this multiple times and, and really believe it, that when you're, if you're close together and you have your mask off for a period of 15 more minutes, there's a possibility that you're going to have an exposure to COVID. In terms of the load limits in rooms, Mr. Hayfley, I've asked that question of the health experts. We don't have the science on that yet. I mean, some people are, are talking about it and are making some projections about it, but we don't have the science on that yet. And I was told just yesterday by the epidemiologists here in Weld County that, you know, there's just a lot we still don't know because the science isn't there yet and the children have not been back in school yet. And so we, we will learn a lot and there will be a lot of science that is developed out of that. And that's not to say that we're experimenting on kids. I mean, that is just the reality of, of how science works for people coming back. We did upgrade our filters. So right now, all of our filters are, and systems are clean and up to date. And then we, we are. And then we, we are able to go up one more level on our filters in the systems that we have. So we'll go to the highest level we're allowed to run in our systems and still have our systems operate at optimum. And so the next change out of filters, which will come prior to winter when we're not going to be able to be outdoors, we're going to need to close windows, we'll, we will have a higher grade of filter in our classrooms. And again, then those air purifying machines are coming in. 300 of those are already in. We are beginning to distribute those to classrooms without windows. And then the other 900 should be in sometime in the next seven to 10 days, we think.
Okay, thank you. This is a side note. Jason Encinitas, the Volunteer of the Year every year, he keeps bothering me or contacting me about will he get back into Winograd to, to volunteer? Can you tell us about volunteers?
At this time, we are not allowing volunteers in our schools, nor are we allowing parents to visit classrooms or volunteer in classrooms or have lunch with their children. And this is a piece of the guidance that's coming to us from the health officials is just keep the adults out. I'm not going to be in schools and I hate that. My job is schools. But I, I'm not going to be in schools because the advice is that we're not adding extra adults into schools who might be exposing children or staff to the virus. So for now, it's not forever. This isn't going to be forever, but for now.
I understand.
For now, that's where we are.
When one of our staff gets, at some point, one of our staff's going to get COVID. And if they run out of sick days, are they going to be able to use days from the sick bank to supplement?
So let me talk about COVID leave. So by federal requirement, we are obligated, at least through this semester, I believe it is, to provide COVID leave for staff who are either being tested for COVID or who have COVID. And so they, they do not use their own sick leave for the first 14 days of that. And then they do have the opportunity to use their own sick leave after that. I do suppose if we would have somebody with a long-term illness, at that point, we would talk about, does the district cover that leave or do they access the sick leave bank if they're a part of the sick leave bank? Not all of our employees have the opportunity to be a part of the sick leave bank. So we would, you know, we would need to work with the employee in the case of an extended absence if they're not able, able to be a part of the sick leave bank. And then there is also COVID, and COVID leave at two-thirds pay of your daily rate for individuals who are caring for someone who is ill with COVID or caring for their child while their child's school is closed. We can, we can put that information in your weekly memo again so that you all have that again. I'll ask Megan to put that, all that COVID leave stuff. That's a big question that keeps coming up and we've talked about it a lot and it still comes up. So what tells me, I just got to keep talking about it to help people to know. I mean, it, you know, it was in the Teacher Town Hall and I know some of the people who asked the question yesterday about COVID leave actually watched the Teacher Town Hall. So we just got to keep talking about sick leave.
Thank you. And then substitute teachers, if we're not allowing in volunteers, how are we doing the substitute teachers?
They're not volunteers. They're, they're employees. So we're treating them as employees. And then we're working with, with them to commit to a given number of days each week. And then we're actually working to assign them to certain schools so that we're limiting, you know, movement of substitute teachers just as we would any employee. We actually are in better shape right now than we were a year ago at this time with the number of subs who have committed to be substitute teachers. So, you know, I, I'm not naive that we won't still have issues with having enough substitute teachers. We will. The thing I think that will help is we are not pulling teachers out of classroom for our professional development and other work that we've pulled teachers to come together to do in the past. We won't be, we will not be doing that this school year because of the worry about shortages with substitute teachers and the desire to not have teachers going into other teachers' classrooms.
Okay. If we ask teachers or students to get, be tested, who pays for that, please?
We do, we do not have authority to require someone to be tested, Mr. Hayfley. We can only say you have to, you're exhibiting symptoms, you have to go home. We recommend that you consult with your healthcare provider. We are working, Megan actually sent me a text that I saw on the break, our Chief Financial Officer. We are working with our provider, our health insurance provider, Aetna, and with Banner Health to have a low-cost option to test teachers who are symptomatic. And so that will, we're working on that. We'll need to make a determination if it's something we can pay for out of CARES Act dollars or if it would be at the teacher's expense. But it would be very low cost, like I think she's looking at something around $10. And I, we do believe we can use CARES Act dollars for that. I want to reiterate, that would be symptomatic people. We've had some talk about making testing available for everyone. What we have run into is that is really problematic to test everyone. And I think Ms. Mash will tell you, the healthcare field isn't necessarily doing that with every employee.
No.
Yeah.
We're only testing an asymptomatic person if they had a known exposure to a COVID-positive person.
So we would also, you know, if, if an employee has a known exposure, say their spouse is, has COVID, a positive COVID test, then they, you know, that would, that would be eligible for this as well, just as an employee would be who would be symptomatic. We're also hoping to have an opportunity that, where we can easily advise parents that this is the place they can go to have their child tested and have those, that family to have those results back within a two to three day turnaround if at all possible.
Okay. And I believe on Monday, you're going to share with us class, possible class sizes based on registration. Is that correct?
Yes. Well, it's really, right now, I mean, they're in there right now, but they're, the principals and assistant principals are still working to move kids around in an effort to lower class size. And in an effort, you know, as we've pushed out these other licensed folks to, to be able to be classroom teachers, now they've got to build schedules for those folks and move those children around. So, you know, I was hearing yesterday afternoon late from the association representatives that class size was still up around 26, 27, 28. But in checking in with Mr. Osmus, that was at middle schools, checking in with Mr. Osmus this morning, he indicated that everybody's staying there at 24 or lower. So we'll have, we'll have more final numbers on Monday that we can talk about.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayfley. I, I think it's Ms. Mueller and then Ms. Solis and then Ms. Mash. So Ms. Mueller.
So thank you very much for all of the additional details. I would say that in my conversations with teachers and parents who are concerned about returning to brick and mortar school, they fall under three broad categories. And they're my concerns as well. And one does involve testing. And the accurate data we get from whether it is the Department of Health for Weld County, whether it's from, you know, the Greeley Tribune or whoever is reporting data that it is accurate. I appreciate the data you brought today, truly, because I think that is some of the best data I've, I've seen. We keep getting a lot of conflicting reports. I don't think the numbers in the Greeley Tribune have changed for four months, frankly. And so I do think there's an indictment there on the communication amongst all the entities that do communicate this, that there's no way to respond if we don't have the right data. Testing is a big concern and I know that is the concern that came up with Pooter School District and Thompson School District making, making the decisions that they are making. That the turnaround time for getting results is too long. That because this disease is so challenging with the 14-day incubation period, it, it's hard to, to quarantine a cohort if we don't know for a week potentially that someone is ill. And because people can be asymptomatic, I appreciate Doc, I appreciate Mr. Hayfley asking the question about can we require students to test? And I ask that because, you know, I'm going back to school in two weeks as well. And the college students are getting COVID. They are. And we're not even back in class. And so I asked the same question of my own administration at UNC. You know, how do we make students get tests before they can come back into the classroom? And I think you've answered that question and that we can't. And my fear is if parents do not take this seriously, then we will shut down. And I, I, I think that's a question and a concern I would put out to all of our community members is that we have to have a partnership. And so that partnership entails that our government elected officials partner with us as well and provide the kind of support we need in order to open up schools safely, including the data, including support for testing. Testing is not free. In some countries, it has been. So I think we have to consent, consider what we do with that testing and how we ensure the, the best possible outcomes. Because I think what parents are worried about as well as teachers is how do we guarantee there will be no positive cases or deaths? And the hardest answer is, I don't think we can. And I feel that intensely. I don't think we can. And the problem is, we also can't prevent deaths from other means and that happens too. And I am intensely concerned about our students who are struggling right now because they haven't been in school. Struggling because they don't have mental health support. Struggling because they're in homes that aren't maybe very positive places. Struggling because they're food insecure. And so there are no guarantees. And so the, the second concern I hear is the chaos of closing. Because the worry, we will have a positive case, that we'll have to just shut down again and that that will be another detriment to our students who are disappointed. And then the final is that you brought up again and again is choice. I have been very confident in our administration and in your team and in our administrators and our teachers and our staff. Perhaps I'm a Pollyanna who has too much faith in the people we have serving District Six, but I do. Because I know they have the capacity to take this plan and make it work for the education of our students. But I guess the question I would ask is accountability. How do we have everybody in the system, not just our children, but also our teachers and our adults who are role models, making sure that everyone is compliant with their distancing, their mask use, their washing of hands? Because I have seen personally, people become complacent. And complacency is what leads to those spikes. And I know Natalie has seen that in her work. And I think that we have to hold the course and make a very somewhat punitive statement. Your kid wears a mask or they go home. We social distance or we face shutting down. And yes, rules are difficult and nobody wants to take that accountability, I feel sometimes in our public discourse, to say, yes, we do all have to wear masks. But there's consequences for not doing this. And those consequences are more time quarantined, shut up in our homes, more people getting laid off, more unemployment. And those have, those, those problems have consequences too, where people are food insecure, they're being evicted, they're losing their jobs. And that's not a great outcome either. So a lot of my correspondence with parents and with teachers this week is the fear is real and I understand that. I do. And I think the biggest thing it comes down to is choice. You brought it up, access and choice. I fear if we make the decision to wait or to go online, we will strip choice from a population of our parents who actually don't have it. I have extreme privilege by being able to work from home. I've had the privilege of making a choice of whether my classes at UNC will be online or face-to-face. Mine will be face-to-face. At UNC, we have much bigger classrooms to work with. I get that. Every student has to wear a mask to come to class. Yes, we'll social distance. These are choices I have. Many of our parents never stopped working in their grocery store, senior centers, hospitals, GBS. They've been working all along. They don't have the choice to work from home. And yes, maybe we shouldn't be the daycare providers for everyone, but we are. We shouldn't be the people that provide all the food for people, for our students who are facing poverty and dealing with food insecurity, but we are. So if we decide to wait or to not go back to brick or mortar school, we've stripped choice from the people who are desiring that. Whereas our, our, our parents who don't want their kids to return to school do have choice. They can choose the online version. So I guess the only question I really have is, Dr. Pilch, are we ensuring everybody can make that choice?
Make the choice to go online, Pepper?
Or go back face-to-face.
Well, I feel like we've done as much of that as we possibly can. The reality is if a home does not have internet and there is not cell service capability in that home where we could deploy a hotspot, I, I don't, I think that family would struggle with choosing online. And, and that's one of the conversations our staff are having as they reach out to every family who has chosen online is, do you have reliable internet access? How do you have reliable internet access? So that, that is the place, Pepper, where when I talk about access, if we go fully remote, we will have students who do not have access to fully remote learning. Because they, there are homes in this community that do, do not and cannot get internet access at this time. So there is a barrier there. Yeah.
I'm not okay with that barrier, frankly.
Right. Right.
I really, we need to educate our children in some way. So the other question I have is not only our children and their families, but are our teachers and our staff having an equal choice in whether to return to brick and mortar or stay at home online?
No, they are not, Pepper. Ms. Mueller, I got to be honest about that. There, there, we do not have the capacity for every employee to choose in-person learning or online. We, we have been able to place many people who requested to be an online teacher into the online teaching position. Many of them, probably most who requested that have been placed there. So that, that is pretty good. I mean, we, we've made great progress there in matching that up. I know they were still working on a, a staff member who teaches in an elective area and we really didn't need that elective area in the online learning program. And so they were working to see what else that teacher could possibly teach, so that teacher could possibly go to online. So that's really come through these accommodation requests that folks have asked for. And why, you know, they have to have a reason that they're asking for an accommodation and requesting to teach online can be a request that comes through an accommodation request as well. But we, we don't have the capacity, say, for example, to go to Brentwood Middle School and say, anybody who wants to be, go remote, you can. Anybody who wants to be brick and mortar, you can. We, we just, we don't have the capacity to do that and still offer a full program that we want, you know, for our children. And then, as I said, with our other staff, we have staff that their position doesn't allow for any opportunity to work remote. You know, our, our grounds folks, our, you know, our bus drivers, our other folks in the Transportation Department. You know, office, office people, yes, they possibly can work remote. But, you know, many of our frontline employees who provide support services in this district are custodians. I mean, they, they are frontline doing the work every single day that is brick and mortar work and work about getting kids to school and getting them through the school day. So there, there isn't that opportunity.
I appreciate your honesty on that. Thank you. I don't have any other questions at this time, but-
You asked a little bit about testing, do you want me to talk a little bit more about testing? Yes, you're correct, we cannot force test anyone. We can't legally. We, Megan texted me on the, just a little bit ago, she must be watching. She, our chief financial officer, indicated that she's making significant progress with our insurance provider being able to provide testing for teachers who request it. So they would not have to be symptomatic and then our insurance, you know, their insurance would cover it. For folks who are symptomatic or who have a known exposure, testing is free right now. You know, we can get testing for anyone who has a known exposure or who is symptomatic. So there is not a cost for those folks. But, you know, in talking with the health departments in the Denver metro area as well as the Weld County Health Department, they, and, and CDE has recommendations too, they are not recommending that we test all staff or all students. No one is recommending that. For one thing, a negative test is going to give us false, a false sense of security because a negative test are the tests that are most likely to be inaccurate. The other reason is, we will skew the test data. So if I, every two weeks, test all 3,000 employees in District Six, now the percent, the numbers of people who were tested grows dramatically. But in that group, we're probably going to see a very few, small number of actual positive cases. And so, the health officials this week told the Denver area superintendent, you know, that's not really helpful because you've just created a greater body of folks being tested who didn't really need to be tested. So you don't, you're not going to get a true sense of what your positivity is. The other thing that, that they're saying is that we don't want to overload the, the testing systems in that way. That there, the problem with getting tests back, results back in a timely manner now is what's called reagents. And this came from another health call I was on a panel with this week. And they, they spoke to this, that the reagents, which as I understand it is what is used to actually process the test, is what is in short supply right now. And so that's, if we dump a bunch, if every school district coming back in the country decides to test all their teachers or all their students or offer it to all their students, we are going to see a significant lag in getting back test results in a timely manner. Significant. So, we gotta be really thoughtful about how we do that, I think, as, as school systems.
Dr. Pilch?
That's all I have, thank you.
If we can't require a test, but can we require that the student or the staff member does not return for 10 days?
Yes, we absolutely can. Well, and so if we know there's a known exposure, we can require they not attend, you know, for the quarantine period. If they are symptomatic and they, they don't get a test, we would recommend that they quarantine for the, for the 10 days and be symptom-free for 24 hours or 48, Lori? Improving symptoms and fever-free 24 hours.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. I think Ms. Solis is next.
So I would just encourage the work on making sure that the class sizes are, are as low as possible. And then, so we haven't seen very much enforcement in our local community around wearing masks, even when there's places like grocery stores that require them. I mean, most people have adhered to it, but you still see people here and there that go in without a mask and nothing happens to them. In our situation, it will be, you have to have a mask. And so what happens to that parent when they come to the door and they don't have a mask and they're refusing to wear a mask?
They're not going to come in.
Okay.
We're gonna, we'll offer them a mask, but if they refuse to wear it, they're not coming in. It's that simple. We'll get security involved and, we're, you know, we're, we, we have to be very clear about this.
I agree. And unfortunately, even though there's been places that have said that they require masks, they've still allowed people in. So, this is going to be different for some of our community members. They're not totally prepared for them being told, no, you will not enter without a mask. So, just want to make sure that we're prepared for that and that our staff is protected. So, thank you.
I think Ms. Mash, you're next.
I just wanted to, I guess, again, give my opinion. After hearing from Mrs. Mueller, just, you know, yes, it would be fantastic if we could say 100%, no one's going to get sick, no one's going to get severely ill. And we, we can't say that. And there's lots of times where I have a patient that I'm trying to offer some comfort to and I, I can't say, everything's going to be fine. But I could say, studies show that most children who get this infection recover well. You know, so, so take some comfort in that. But I just feel like, again, not trying to sugarcoat it in any way, but I feel really good about this plan. And I'm not just do or die, let's go back to school. But if everyone wears a mask, if everyone maintains as much distance as they can, if handwashing is happening and disinfecting of surfaces is happening, we have air purifiers, we have new filters, we have so many layers of protection. And I feel really good that they are all overlapping to help to cover those holes. And I just, I have had people talk to us about, you know, what happens when someone dies, what happens when lots of people die? And I just want to say, like, we are not assuming that. We are not saying, we're okay with that, just a few people dying. We're not saying that at all. We are, we are making our very best plan that that is not going to happen. And, and we can't say that it won't. But I was thinking of if there's an analogy in another place in life, and I just was thinking about, like, driving a vehicle is, is a dangerous thing to do. But if you maintain your car and you have tires that work and you're not drunk and things like that, you know, it's a pretty safe thing to do. Can we say absolutely that you won't have a blowout, that you won't, that something bad won't happen? No, we can't. But, so I just feel like we haven't really talked about that, this is a good plan. We have good data. We have, we know more than we have known. And, and, and of course, there, there's, there's a chance. But, but I just, that, I, that's my positive take on this. I feel really good about it from a medical perspective, from the fact that Dr. Pilch is being updated constantly with new data, with the best information that we can proceed. And then we can stop if we need to and we can alter course, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mash. Ms. Papas?
So, this is a follow-up to Ms. Mueller and also Ms. Mash, but, and also going back to my MTSS world. What I know is when you have a good plan, it is important for that accountability. And it's not just about the student actions, but it is also about the adult actions. And if any time that we have been in a situation that it is important for adults to be held accountable and to pay attention and to not become complacent, our students are going to be watching that. And so I feel like that is just really important, that we remember how important our adult actions are. The other thing I want to say is, you mentioned this on Monday, and I don't know if Mr. Haley heard this or not, but you did talk about the opportunity for a teacher, if I have to go in quarantine for two weeks, that I could do some remote teaching from my classroom or from my home. So maybe just talk about that a little bit more. I'm not sure that Mr. Haley had the opportunity to hear that.
Thank you.
And then, has there been any conversa, I know that we're, we're focused right now on getting into school and, and making this work. Is, has there been any talk at the state level about testing? Any sort of state testing at all? Are we still waiting to hear what?
Well, so, I'll start with that question and go back to the quarantine question. Superintendents continue to inquire and to ask for a stay on state testing. We, we are getting almost no traction with that. I would assume we will have state testing this fall. There, there is a plan to administer the PSAT and the SAT that was not administered last spring. And, but, and we're, we're just, we're hitting a wall on the state testing. And, and to be fair, we're all in the same boat, you know? It's, it creates an additional burden, of course. I think the, the question that came out initially was, shouldn't we be saving all that money that the state is spending on state testing and sending out to schools? When it really comes down to it, it's pennies on the dollar that would come to schools. It's, it's not a, it's not a huge budget when you consider 176 school districts throughout the state of Colorado. So, I mean, that's an area where, you know, Rhonda asked about what you all could do with talking to other elected officials. I mean, I think that's an area where you all could push on elected officials at the, state representative level and the state board of education around the testing requirements, if you have strong feelings about the test requirements. Around quarantining and teaching, so, thank you for asking that, Ms. Papas. So let's say that there is a, a positive case of COVID in a classroom. And it is determined that most everyone in that classroom or everyone in that classroom had enough significant close contact in that cohort that they have, they need to quarantine, including the teacher needing to quarantine. At that point, we, what we have begun to prepare, have prepared for is for that teacher to actually go home, assuming the teacher's well, and to be able to teach all of the students remotely at that time while they are all quarantined. So, the, part of the idea of getting kids back in and getting on the device and use that digital content is that it becomes pretty seamless when it, when everybody's got to go home and continue with that work digitally. The other thing that we're working on, we'll start at the secondary level, is the ability for teachers to teach in their classroom and students to be at home watching that lesson. So if they're, you know, the teacher isn't quarantined, but say, say just a small group of the students are quarantined, that the capability to actually be able to teach and have those students at home observe that teaching. So we're working on that as well. And we will be piloting that at our secondary level soon. You all haven't asked about transportation and where we are with, with transportation. Do you want me to talk about transportation?
Can I just clarify real quick? So, if I'm a teacher though, and I'm the one that has to go in quarantine for two weeks, is there the opportunity for me to teach from home, my students?
Yes, yes, thank you, yes. And to hire a substitute for your classroom just to be in there with your kids? Yes, there absolutely is. Yep, there is. Yes, and, you know, so we're going to do everything we can to keep instruction going. I want to be clear, the idea around cohorting is twofold. One is you prevent the, the spread of the virus across the entire school because you've got these anywhere from 20 to 100 kids, depending on the grade level, who are part of a cohort. But it, but it is also the idea that we are probably going to have some cases break out in a cohort and we're going to have to quarantine that cohort. But that will allow us to, at times, by being in a cohort, it allows us to take those mask breaks. It allows us to, kids be able to work together in a lab and do a science lab together with masks on, knowing that there's maybe a higher likelihood of exposure. But that exposure is within that cohort of kids and that cohort, that cohort of teachers that work with that group of students. So, you know, I'm not, we will have cases, guys. I'm not naive enough to think we won't. We were fortunate that we didn't have any of our athletes or our students in our summer school programs. But we had, we had an adult who had a positive case of COVID and we had to do some quarantining with the folks who had worked with that adult. And, you know, we, we are, there are cases out there. We're going to have some cases. We're a big community. And we're going to do everything we can to prevent the spread of that and to protect our people who are the most vulnerable. And so, so for example, you know, trying to make accommodations for those, those teachers who have, and, and support staff, not just teachers, all of our staff who have those comorbidities, who are at greater risk of serious complications from COVID. We have to protect those employees. You know, our, we're providing N95 masks for our bus drivers because, you know, our, they're on a school bus with kids and some of our bus drivers are over the age of 65. And so we know that's a group, that is a group of staff we need to provide a more protective gear for, like our health room clerks and our school nurses. They will have a higher level of protective equipment than what, you know, a classroom teacher will because they are going to be at higher risk in the environment they're in.
Thank you, Ms. Papas. Mr. Haley?
You know, if the chaos occurs and we have to close down, one of my questions is that, is there a way that we could ask our educators to teach from their rooms in the buildings to allow them to have more access to the resources they normally have as well as create a, a more professional environment for our students to be looking at them within their building?
I think it'll, Mr. Haley, that will determine what kind of an outbreak we're dealing with, why we closed. If we close because we are basically going back to stay-at-home order, then no, we probably would not bring our teachers in, is my initial reaction to that. Because you're bringing, you know, anywhere from 30 to 120 people into a building where they can have contact with each other. So, it really depend on a reason for closing and for going remote, if we would bring teachers in or not. I do know that on the one day of remote that we will have at the high school level, there are teachers who are saying, can I be in my classroom and teach in my classroom? And we're saying, absolutely. And, and that's what's preferred, is that they come in and they teach from their classroom on that day that their children are remote.
Thank you.
Are there any other, oh, Ms. Mueller?
The two questions I had, one was I am excited to hear about the transportation plan. You offered it up and I'd like to hear it. And I just lost track of my second question, so we'll just leave it at that.
So, transportation, we've not gotten a lot of guidance from CDE or CDPH on transportation. So we have been figuring it out, looking at what other types of public transportation are, are doing and, and looking, and then talking with other superintendents. So we, we are putting out an appeal to parents that if they are able to transport their children to school and they qualify for transportation, that they do so. And, and we will be asking parents to actually register for transportation so that you have to commit to take that seat on the transportation and you got to commit AM and PM both or one or the other. They, right now, we are required, well, always, we're required to transport certain groups of students, like our students who we're transporting for a special education program to another site, our students who are homeless, our students who are in the foster care system, those are students who we are required to transport. They will get priority transportation in, as school starts up, if we do have to limit transportation. We are allowing two students to a seat on the bus. The windows will be, need to be down and masks will be required. Bus drivers will be provided N95 masks. And, you know, we'll, we'll monitor this carefully because we know with bus drivers, you know, you're having to take care of everybody behind you and worry about moving this significant piece of equipment down the roadway. And so, we understand that we may be utilizing additional CARES Act dollars to provide support in, in terms of transportation, depending where we land. We, we are down some of our drivers right now and understandably so. I'm sure it's very scary for some of them to come back. And knowing that, you know, they're, they're going to be in this enclosed space, albeit with windows down, but they're still in this enclosed space with, you know, 30 or 40 students. So that, you know, that is, I'm sure that is scary for some bus drivers and, and, and some have health risks or their family members do that cause them to, to be fearful about coming back and being in that situation with the students. We will have hand sanitizer as students get on the bus and will be expected to use it. We will not be doing temperature checking prior to getting on the bus because we, then what? We're, we're going to tell a little kid to go, turn around and go back home? And it's not recommended, the temperature check before buses? Actually, at this point, CD is not even recommending that we do it at the buildings. But we feel a need to do that at our buildings as families drop their students and as, you know, students come in the building and as staff come in the building. So, we're going, we are going to temperature check at the building.
And I thought of the other question I had while you were speaking and it was regarding, you made, made mention of guidance on going hybrid with the seventh and eighth grade classes. And I guess the big question I have is, with Mr. Asmus talking about kind of where the class sizes are currently, what are you hearing from the administrators as far as their- class sizes are currently, what are you hearing from the administrators as far as their either concerns or their confidence in bringing back the seventh and eighth grade classes?
The building principals at the middle schools absolutely want their sixth, seventh, and eighth graders there every single day. They, not a one of them is advocating for a hybrid schedule at middle level, not a one. Now, having said that, there are teachers who are advocating for a hybrid schedule at middle level. We are, you know, we are hearing from teachers asking, why are we not doing hybrid at middle school like we are at high school? So, what I'd like to do is really have that discussion Monday night when we have more data on class size, and when, once we've heard from the health department on the current data in the county, then I'd like us to have that conversation about hybrid or not at seventh and eighth. I, you know, if I was directed to consider sixth, I would do that. I want to tell you, there's not any part of me that thinks we should have sixth graders at home for three days a week or two days a week, whatever their schedule ends up being.
Mr. Tally?
Yeah, could you just talk about, what is the sanitizing, the buildings? Is it a weekly thing or how is it cleaned?
All day long, every day. So, lots of ways. And it's really disinfecting that we're doing. So, there's cleaning, and then the next level is sanitizing, and then the highest level is disinfecting. So, every office, every classroom teacher will have just a bottle of disinfectant, will have paper towels, and so, will have the ability, and there will be some expectation of the times that they need to disinfect in their classroom or classroom supplies. So, teachers will be asked to disinfect any time that a different group of students is going to be coming into the classroom or a different group of students is going to be using equipment. Now, we've purchased additional equipment. You may see piles and piles back here in the, one north of boxes, that is additional equipment to go out to schools so that there's not as much sharing of equipment as what we would typically do. And then, the custodians are sanitizing every classroom nightly, or disinfecting every classroom nightly with the spray. So, that's why it's so important that teachers get their rooms cleaned up and office, people get their offices cleaned up, principals get their offices cleaned up so that we can go in, our custodians can go in and easily spray down surfaces and easily do that disinfecting. And then, if there is a suspected individual with, who is suspected to have COVID, we will do additional disinfecting in the areas where that individual's been. So, for example, if they've used the restroom or after, you know, they've been in the health room area and those things. So, lots of disinfecting will occur. It's, you know, we've been practicing it here. When I come in in the morning, I am required to spray down the surfaces in my office and wipe them down. And any time I have a meeting in my office, I spray and wipe down the area where those visitors were in my office. And then, at the end of the day, I spray and wipe down everything before I leave my office. And that's, that is the practice we've all been trained in, in the spaces that we're responsible for. It does create additional responsibility on the part of our staff members, all of our staff members, and we recognize that. And, you know, this is not forever, we hope. We hope that at some point we'll be able to go to a place where we are not having to be as vigilant about this, but maybe it is forever. Maybe novel viruses are the way of the world going forward, we'll see. But we're prepared, we have plenty of disinfectant, lots of supplies, lots of hand sanitizer. Every classroom is provided with hand sanitizer, every office space is provided with it. I mean, you see the bottles of it. We've purchased a subscription of sanitizer so that every month we will receive hand sanitizer on a regular basis to deploy out to our facilities. So, it's a crazy, crazy time.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Ms. Elise, you're next.
You talked about transportation, but who will be in charge of cleaning down the buses and stuff?
I believe the bus drivers do that too, Ms. Elise. I believe they do. I, you know, and there is additional support from our custodial staff if we have an outbreak and we need to go, you know, deeper on our cleaning. Like, I know we've had to do in the past with the norovirus, but I believe our, and, yeah, they're spraying it down. So, we have those wands that we purchased, and we have purchased more since, but that we first started to use during the norovirus outbreak. But they're, you know, they're wands, little machines that you put these tablets of disinfectant in, and then you just go in and spray. So, it's a pretty quick, pretty quick process, but it's a burden on everybody to take care of the areas in which they are working in.
Thank you.
Mr. Haley?
Thanks for the protocols. I appreciate that. With the CARES money, were we able to, to be able to find more building managers to help with the cleaning of the rooms? Or are we still staffed at the same level that we've been?
No, we did not add staff. The only staff really that we have added with CARES Act dollars so far is teachers for online learning, some support for English language learner students for online learning. We have not added staff, and I'll tell you why. It ends at, on December 31st. So, anybody we would hire, we would have to either find new dollars to continue to employ them, or we would have to lay them off at the end of December. So, we are, instead, the trade-off around custodial services was when we did our budget cuts in the spring, we did not cut any positions from custodial services. And in other departments where there were open positions and had been open for a while, we cut those positions. We did not do that in custodial services. So, we have continued to work to fill those positions and to be fully staffed with custodial services, knowing we would need to with the outbreak of this virus.
So, the norovirus is much more contagious than the COVID is. And did we learn from that, and are we implementing that as part of your protocols?
Well, we, we had a contagion or a communicable disease plan that we put in place as a result of the norovirus. So, absolutely, that plan helped us as we have gone forward with this planning. But the amount of work that Ms. McCarty and her team and other members of our emergency response team and their colleagues have put in is far beyond the protocols that were developed during the norovirus work or even in our communicable disease plan. I mean, we have, I mean, this is just very extensive. We have flow charts for a positive case, we have flow charts for somebody who's symptomatic. I mean, it's, the plans are very, very extensive now, and much more so than they were with norovirus. And as they should be. I mean, this is widespread, this is, and this is, for some people, very, very serious. I don't know that it's less contagious or more contagious than norovirus. I don't have any idea about that.
I think it's pretty.
Yeah, we think this is pretty darn contagious from.
It takes very long to be exposed to.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Elise?
Sorry, one more question. So, what's going to happen at our family center?
Very much like our schools, Rhonda, and so, as people come in, they will need to wear masks to come in. I mean, it's, you know, just like what we're doing now with the registration, if you look, you'll see families coming in. So, it's, you know, it is still, it will be open, masks will be required, there's social distancing.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pappas?
Could we have access on E-Week to the training videos that are being presented to building staff?
Sure.
Thank you.
I don't think there's anybody else. Can I ask a couple of questions? I'm wondering about our move to the, how many ever, 12%, I think maybe that are going online? So, we got all those numbers, and, you know, we'll have, you know, 2,500 to 3,000 students, we think, online. And then, we will have teachers from buildings that will teach those students online. So, let's say we have a fourth grade, and they have three fourth grade teachers, and now one of those is going to be an online teacher. What happens to those students? I mean, the number, if the number of students hasn't gone down and that?
We only pulled teachers commensurate with the number of students a building lost. So, we went building by building.
Okay.
And identified the children that were coming out of that building, the students coming out of that building, and then by formula determined how many teachers or staff would come out of that building. We, and we were more conservative at middle school and pulling middle school teachers out simply because of the desire to get middle school classes down a little bit more. So, we added, I want to, I want to say four or six additional FTE out of CARES Act, and we'll have to keep those people on, so we'll have to shift general fund second semester for those people. But we did add some additional teachers for online learning, too.
Will we have to combine grades, though?
I think some schools are actually looking for online or brick and mortar.
For, for brick and mortar. So, I'm still wondering like.
Yeah, some schools are looking at that. In some cases, I think schools were looking at, well, how about if we use this interventionist and create a blended 2-3 classroom or a blended 4-5 classroom? Then that would bring class sizes down in fourth grade and fifth grade both. So, I think some schools are looking at combining classes.
Okay.
I think they are. And we're letting buildings make those determinations. And then, remember, we are pushing out that additional, those additional positions that were not actual classroom teacher positions. So, we're also adding positions to the elementaries from those positions, and some from middle school. So, if you're a Title I middle school and you have intervention, an interventionist, we are, we're using those people in the classroom as well to help lower class size.
Okay. My second question was just around getting people outside, and I know we've talked about the need for more recess. Is, do teachers have the ability to take their students outside for lunch if they wanted to? Or can they take them to the playground to have science?
So, I don't know where, I, we'll find out before Monday where we've landed with going outdoors for lunch. I know we've talked about going outside for lunch. I need to find out where we are. Part of it was seating, and so, I need to find out on lunch. But in terms of classes, absolutely. And we are clearly sending a message to building administration that this is the time to be most flexible around those kinds of expectations. And in my staff meetings that I'm doing virtually, I said, I've said it yesterday, and I'll continue to say it, that this is the time to focus on health and safety. And that also means emotional well-being for you and your children, and your students you work with, so that students feel safe to be here and get outside. Go for walks with your students, get outside and do schoolwork with your students. I mean, I'm encouraging that. And I know that both of the assistant superintendents over the schools are working with their principals on different ways to build those plans so that teachers can get their kids outdoors.
Okay, thank you.
I did get new guidance today, and I think we're going to publish it on, I mentioned PE, maybe, but on music and band. We've been waiting on this. So, it looks like the guidance we will be pushing out will be that for students to actually be able to participate in singing or playing an instrument other than a percussion instrument, whatever else we call those, Christina? Yeah, you know, handheld instruments are fine. But any of the instruments that involve blowing, we're not going to be able to do indoors. So, they'll have to go outdoors, and they'll have to space six to 10 feet to do that. Same with singing. If we're going to sing, we're going to have to go outdoors, and we're going to have to get six to 10 feet apart. And we'll be able to take masks off and do that, and we'll ask teachers to keep a safe distance from their students as they're, they're doing that. But there won't be any singing or playing instruments that you blow on inside the building in a classroom anyway, as a class, to start the year. So, inside, you know, there's others, there's other pieces to music besides just the performance piece that they can work on inside the building.
What about theater?
Theater is similar, yeah, very similar for theater. You know, but they're, you know, too, though, with theater, they can wear masks and socially distance and do a lot of stuff indoors. It's just going to be different, very different.
Thank you, Dr. Pilch. We, I don't think have time to do our long-range planning. Thank you for answering so many questions. That's helpful for us. It's helpful for us to communicate, to get good communication to our teachers.
I'm really glad to do it. I'll be going home and taking a nap now. I'm kidding, I'm no, actually, I have an emergency planning meeting this afternoon with the team. So, no, I'm happy to share with you all. I know you've had a lot of questions, and I appreciate how much time you all have put in. Many of you have been on the phone with me in addition to the virtual meetings we've had. You have, you know, you are putting a lot of time around this. I know you're responding to emails and phone calls, and I appreciate all of you, and I appreciate your leadership. I am deeply, deeply sorry and saddened that this is so hard and so complex and that we are in this place. And I don't think there is any better school board to be in this with than the board I am in this with and the team that I have. So, for that, I'm deeply, deeply grateful that, to be in this place, I'm glad I'm in it with you all and with the executive team that I have around me because this is very hard, and I'm sorry it's so hard for all of us.
Well, thank you. And so, we'll just, we'll close just with our normal debrief about how we feel about the meeting. And since we started on this side of the room, we'll start on this side of the room with Ms. Mash.
I also think that this is a great group of people to work with, and I know each person is thinking about our community, and we value every member of our community, whether there's a student, a parent, a staff member, administration. So, I also feel very privileged to work with all of you and hear all of your ideas and where you're coming from. And Dr. Pilch, you are just amazing here, level of energy and empathy, kindness, professionalism, and you definitely take some naps and take some walks and do some self-care, but.
I don't think I've ever taken a nap. I just probably ever in my whole life. I just, I want to be clear about that. I would guess my mother would tell you, I'm that kid, I never, ever taken a nap. But thank you for your kind words.
Energizer Bunny.
Thank you for your kind words.
You're welcome.
Mr. Tally?
I want to echo everything Natalie said, but I also want to say thank you to Natalie. I think she brings this optimism that all of us sometimes maybe look over, and I appreciate it. Sometimes we get bogged down into the negative what-ifs that we forget to look at, the positive what-ifs or whens, and I really appreciate that. I also want to say thank you to everyone that is viewing today or that has viewed today, maybe they're no longer with us, back to work, whatever it may be, and those who have asked questions. I've written some of them down. I have been multitasking, reading some of them on YouTube, writing them down, and I think that it's very interesting to see. And I encourage you to sign up to speak on Monday if you have some questions that you really would like to ask, because I do appreciate all the community input and participation and collaboration that we all have. So, that's all I have.
Ms. Pappas?
I too am grateful to be here today and grateful for all of you. Thank you for your leadership, Dr. Pilch. I cannot multitask, so it's nice to know that there are people asking questions because we really do want to know what our community thinks, and I appreciate all of the comments and questions. So, we, I'm sure we will have people come to our board meeting Monday, and I look forward to the opportunity to hear from them as well. So, thank you all.
Ms. Elise?
Natalie, I want to thank you for just your experience and being on the front lines in a lot of this in our community and bringing that information to us is very, very helpful. Ray, I want to thank you for continuing to have your kiddo in District Six and always being so mindful at these meetings and always thinking about community. Michael, I want to thank you for being such a calm leader in such a hectic and chaotic time. Your sense of calmness really helps this board. Terry, I want to thank you for your years of commitment to this district, which has not changed, your continued relationships with our teachers, our principals, and just your lens of what it's like to actually be in the of what it's like to actually be in the trenches. Thank you for always bringing that to us. John, I want to thank you for your commitment to teachers and always making sure that their voices are heard, especially when sometimes they don't feel comfortable bringing that forth themselves. Thank you for always being mindful of them. Pepper, I want to thank you for your college information. You are dealing with this from two different directions as a district and a college and it's a double whammy for you. So thank you for always caring so much about kiddos on both levels and for your commitment to this community. I agree with Dr. Pilch. This is an amazing board. This is hard, hard work and we take it very serious. And I can't imagine having to make these tough decisions, even the upcoming decisions about money and deficit and money that we don't have, money that we used to have. I can't imagine doing that work without all of you. And so thank you very much for your time and commitment to our community, to our kids, to our staff. Thank you for that. Dr. Pilch, I want to thank you. I don't know if you're going to need ulcer medicine after all this. This is a pretty high challenge and yet you always rise to it with big heart. I thank our staff. I know this is scary. I know this is hard, hard work, even when you work as hard as you did before all of this and now we're asking more of you. We do want to hear from you. We do want to know. And yet we also have to keep in mind those little people that we're responsible for every single day. I have to follow the commitment that, you know, I have made as a district board member on making sure that students come first. I take that very serious. And so I just want to make sure that community, our staff knows that, again, we don't take this lightly at all. We all have had those fears. I work in the dental field where there's a lot of stuff in the air and so that has been a scary time, too. And along with what Natalie was saying, we've taken a lot of precautions that have looked different than other offices and we've done really well. And so when those things are in place and you do it well, it works. I can confirm that just from my experience. But again, that doesn't take away all of the fears that people have and those are legitimate and we do hear you. So thank you for sharing your stories with us. Thank you for sharing your opinions with us. And like Ray said, thank you for any ideas and options that you bring to the table. We appreciate that. I would really encourage community members to watch the videos, the community one and also the staff one. It answers a lot of questions. And then if you still have questions, to make sure and reach out to any of us or Dr. Pilch or Teresa. But again, I just want to say thank you to all my fellow board members.
Thank you, Ms. Elise.
I'm supposed to follow that?
You are.
It'll be a little challenging.
Challenging, yes.
I, I've sat on a lot of boards and committees in the course of my life and this is the most dynamic group that I've ever worked with and I've never seen more passion for our students, staffs and communities. And I, I think that everybody in the room should be very proud of what they've done. And Rhonda singled us all out. So I'm going to, I'm going to single her since I have that chance. You, you have seen a lot of things in the last almost seven years. You, you've seen the low of lows. You've seen what great leadership does and how it's impacted our district. And now you are facing chaos. And not just here, but with all the, with all the different groups that you work with. You're, you're dedicated. You're passionate. And you won't compromise what is right. When people look at leaders within this community, Rhonda, you're one of the best that there is and I want to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Ms. Mueller?
So I just have to say I appreciate my fellow board members and their ability to speak extemporaneously. I do not have those talents all the time, so I wrote a few notes out. I just wanted to share with the community and with our teachers and staff and administrators that there is no easy path forward. This is an unprecedented time and I think we have to remember that and that we do take our roles very seriously as board members. We're trying to make very difficult decisions and I know the incredible amount of work our district staff, Dr. Pilch and her team, our school administrators, our teachers and our staff have done. They've worked so hard and, and Ms. McCarty as well and your team, thank you, worked so hard to think through every possible scenario and every possible answer to those questions through creativity, thoughtfulness, diligence. And I want to thank you for all that work. I still have faith in this plan to return to face-to-face learning. With all those safety protocols in place and I so appreciate, Ms. Mash, your perspective as a nurse. I think that you have seen it throughout the whole season of this pandemic and I value your expertise and Ms. McCarty's expertise in all this. Our medical providers are the experts and the Department of Health as well, and I thank you for that. I do want to encourage us to have over-communication. As much as people might get mad about the over-communication, I think it needs to remain accessible and transparent. And yes, to our community members, our parents and our teachers, it has to be a two-way street. We cannot develop a plan and then have in the 11th hour, new protestations, new upset, new things we didn't even know was a concern come about. Always, always communicate with all of us, always reach out to our administration. But that responsibility also is on our parents and our community to, to become informed, to listen to the town halls, visit the webpage, answer calls from our school administrators and staff. And finally, to our community, I believe in Greeley-Evans. I've seen amazing things that can happen in this community. But this is an opportunity for our community, our families, and yes, our elected officials to rise to the occasion and support your school district so that our children and teachers can return safely. That means requiring masks community-wide. That means observing social distancing and yes, refraining from having parties and get-togethers with your family and friends. It also means supporting your leaders. We are a community and I do believe in us, but we can't do it alone and we need everyone to partner with us because we are all District Six.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. I don't know if there's much left to say. I'll reiterate what I, what I said in the beginning and what I've said throughout is our assurance to this community, what I can say confidently, is that this is a healthy system. And you've heard those testimonies and, and all the thank yous. This is a, a healthy working relationship we have as a board. We have a healthy relationship with our administration. Our administration has a healthy relationship with our teachers and, and that just enables us to make good decisions. We will, we will follow the data. We have, we watch it. Our administration watches it religiously. We, we're in constant contact and we are making sure that we get good data and the data will determine what we do. We have and we will continue to listen to our community, to our parents and to our teachers that continue to take phone calls and continue to take emails and, and receive texts. And, and we will adapt as we go. As, as the, as we get new information, we, we may move this way or that way, but we're, we're going to adapt as we go and to make the very best decisions we can for our kids. Our students come first and, and everybody up and down our system believes that. So thank you, Dr. Pilch. Thank you to your team. Thank you to our teachers. Thank you, board members. And Dr. Pilch, I'll give you the last word before we close.
Thank you.
If you want it.
Yeah, my team, I did not see, I did not multitask and see the questions on YouTube, so I would guess somebody from my team has done that and captured those so that we can share information as, you know, we know what the questions still are that are out there that we can answer. Just a word about Monday evening's work session and board meeting. We'll do, be in here again for the work session. We, we won't go upstairs until we are able to be in a smaller setting again together. So we'll be in here and we can seat about 15 people in this room. We will have an overflow space upstairs if people are so interested in being here. Folks who are interested in speaking need to go on the district website and there's a sign-up form there and they need to sign up by noon in order to be able to speak on Monday evening. And the speaking is in the actual board meeting, not in the work session. And over the summer, we did rework our public speaking, kind of our, just protocols to where items that are on the agenda in the business meeting will come at the beginning of the meeting in that public speaking like we've always had. And then if there are speakers who are attending who want to speak about items that are not on the agenda, those speakers will be moved to the end of the meeting. Michael will also have some opening comments about that, that we've worked on over the summer, really as a result of, of some not-so-well-managed public speaking at the podium last winter. So we're going to, we're going to make some adjustments to that and just tighten it up a bit, which we are allowed to do by law and is probably long overdue, actually. So folks who want to speak will need to sign up by noon. They will not be able to sign up at the board meeting that night. And Wes Tuttle had texted, I'll just share real quickly, that he has put the retired teachers mentoring on hold, but they have assigned in-building mentors for all the new teachers. He did say he would if, reach out and see if any of them have interest in mentoring in relation to the online learning program, though. But he did put them on hold, just trying to, again, limit the number of additional adults in our buildings. And I, and he reminded me also on the state testing, just this week, the decision was made to not include the testing data in teacher evaluations next year, you know. So there is some exception being made in terms of how we're managing teacher evaluation as a result of, of this outbreak. So with that, I, you know, I'll just say again, thank you to all of you for your comments today. I don't know what we were thinking, Michael and Teri, though that was a one-hour conversation when we planned this meeting, but that's okay. I do need to remind you that our health department is not positioned to where they can actually give us an official guidance or official stance on whether we should open or not open, or whether we should open in the manner that we are opening. Their role has been to provide data and then to walk us through possible scenarios and to certainly give me advice on my plans and, you know, how many people we bring together and that sort of thing. But please don't ask them to give us advice on what we should or shouldn't do because they're not positioned to be able to do that for us. And I would say that most health departments are not doing that for school districts. What they're doing is saying, "Where would you like to go and how do I help you to get there?" And, you know, giving feedback on the plans, which is, you know, what we've been able to get as well from our health department. I do continue to work some with Dr. Wallace and seek his consult as well as, as we go forward, so I just want you all to know that. You know, I am so lucky that, to be in Weld County and to be in a large school district because I get to be a part of the, all the superintendent meetings with all of Weld County, because I'm here in Weld County. I get to be a part of the superintendent meetings of a group of us here in northern Colorado, which is Boulder, St. Vrain, Thompson and Pooter in Greeley. And then I get to be a part of the Denver area superintendent's group because I'm a large school district and so they let us in like they let in Fort Collins and Thompson. So, you know, the real advantage of that during this time has been to have the perspective of multiple superintendents as well as multiple health departments that serve all of those different school districts. So I'm, you know, I'm so fortunate for all of that and it, and really appreciative of my colleagues who are doing this work as well and just as I'm appreciative of you all and my team. And I thank you for your kind words. You are, you're a remarkable board of education. You are. One of the teachers last night said it, so I'll just tell you. I'm going to, actually, I can't lick my finger. The teacher said last night, and I should share, I will close with this. One of the teachers last night said, "I, I am just so pleased with the level of high competency that we have at the, at the district level." And she said, "You, our board of education, your team, Dr. Pilch, you are all very bright people and very dedicated and smart people and I..." That gives me a level of confidence because I know of the high level of competency that we have in all of those positions. And then it was lovely, she said, "And also our teachers and our other staff." You know, we're all, we're all very bright and good people. So anyway, I wanted to, I think that's a great place to, to close and just know that we will, we will keep responding to the data as the data comes at us and we will keep adjusting as we need to and we will always keep our students at the center of that. So thank you.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us. Our meeting is adjourned. Join us again on Monday night.